Inside jokes.
It's Anchorage Library filtered or filtered. Okay, you are set to go.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is May 20th, 2024. This is the GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subject and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310, like Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting to order at 7:01. I'm Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair and Fire Department Supervisor. I'll read the land acknowledgements next. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, situated between the areas known to be Denina and a luptic homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples. Roll call is next. Let's go in the room on the left.
Guy Wade, Road Supervisor.
Jennifer Wingard, Land Use Supervisor.
Brian Burnett, Parks and Rec.
Mike Hetherton, Co-Chair and Housing and Economic Department Supervisor.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have any disclosures this evening?
I'm too bad to do them because we get to the ice.
Okay, thank you. Next is Agenda Revisions and Approval Motion to Approve the Agenda Tonight.
You to approve the agenda?
Ascend.
Thank you. Any opposition? We'll go by assent. Tonight's agenda is approved as written. We have a slew of minutes here. If we would like to approve them all together, I would entertain a motion to do so.
We move to approve the minutes of May 6th GBOS Reorganization Meeting, May 13th GBOS THGC Joint Meeting, May April 29th BOAG GBOS Joint Meeting, April 29th GBOS OC Joint Meeting, April 15th meeting, and then Special Meeting.
Cue, can we have a second?
Well, sir.
Thank you again. Any comments on that? Go by assent if there are any oppositions. Minutes of all of them are approved. Thank you very much, Margaret. Announcements. Girdwood Wildfire Mitigation Day is Saturday, June 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Girdwood Fire Department, Chugatch Electric, and the Alaska Wildlife Conservation Center are collaborating on a woodlot for Girdwood. That is under announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Tonight's number one on our agenda is a resolution of gratitude for the previous supervisor on the Board of Supervisors, Amanda Sassy. Yes, we have three. All right. I want to read it. I'll read it. Resolution of gratitude, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors hereby resolves to honor GBOS member Amanda Sassy. Whereas Amanda Sassy was elected to serve in GBOS Seat B in April 2021 municipal election, and whereas during this service, Amanda Sassy has participated as the GBOS liaisons for the Girdwood Volunteer Fire Department, Roads and Utilities, and Public Safety, and whereas during Amanda Sassy's term, critical issues ensued and have arisen, which requires significant attention, including the continued COVID-19 pandemic, which increased participation in all community meetings virtually, a longstanding discussion with the municipality of Anchorage regarding the contract for services and appropriate funding for Girdwood Fire and Rescue EMS, area-wide funding, the fall storm of 2021, when an atmospheric river produced flooding throughout Girdwood and washed out Rain Road, a critical and vital access to essential municipal utilities, the proposed Fulton Hills development, which motivated immense community involvement and therefore many additional meetings for months and extended time and attentive energy from the body of GBOS, the continued years of work, process, and ultimate approval of the Girdwood Trails Plan, and whereas Amanda Sassy helped represent community from her rounded perspective by consistently participating in meetings with the Girdwood community's interests in mind in a calm, supportive, and assertive manner, and whereas Amanda has provided her unique position of representation by drawing on past and current experience working in the recreation industry in Girdwood, emergency medical response in Girdwood and Whittier, and more, assisting in volunteering in her community from gardens to youth sports to trail work, all while serving on nonprofit boards and committees in this Turniguan Arm National Heritage area consistently and throughout her residence in Girdwood. Therefore, be it resolved that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors thanks Amanda Sassy for her commitment, hard work, and friendly participation in her term of service on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, passed and approved by the Girdwood Board of Supervisors this 20th day of May, 2024. Thank you.
You, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
And I really appreciate the time that I spent with all of you, and I look forward to working with you all in the future. Okay. Number two, presentation from NSTAR with TBA. I don't see Sterling here, and I think they have a presentation. I'll be a placeholder, I presume. Number three is the presentation from Alaska Regional Hospital, application for South Anchorage Emergency Room. Hank?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me. I have a handout here. I apologize. It was a little late. I did not have traffic. This is the best non-marcosonic sleep aid I have to offer, so if you'll hear me, I'll pass it around just to give some context for one of our plans here.
Thank you.
After meeting with Chief Weston, she was gracious enough to suggest this is an opportunity to sort of share what we're doing and the impact it's going to have on the Girdwood community. I think my objectives tonight are first and foremost, be really transparent about what we're looking to build in South Anchorage, the impact I feel it's going to have on Girdwood, and then hopefully garner some information back and opinions on it if you guys want to take. There's two pages there. Just one's past, far as. So our proposal is to build a freestanding emergency room in the Hupman Business Park in South Anchorage. So what does that mean for good Girdwood? In talking to Chief Weston, one of the biggest challenges that this community faces is there are a few anguinal pricks, and to make a run all over the city of Anchorage to drop off a patient takes one of those units out of service for a significant amount of time. Opening a freestanding emergency room would allow low acuity transport. It would drop off sooner and actually cut off about 40 minutes of round trip time, allowing one of the few rigs to get back in service to the community more frequently. It also disperses emergency medicine throughout the city of Anchorage. If you look at the map on those pages, you can see all emergency medicine and hospitals in general are forwarded toward the northern. And so this is an effort to really unload some of the volume we're feeling in our emergency rooms in Anchorage and to disperse that volume more evenly throughout. And I'd like to open to questions you guys have. This is kind of a new concept. This will be the first one. It's kind built in the state of Alaska. We did attempt this last year. Some of the feedback we got from the state, you know, the definition of insanity would do the same thing over and over, expecting a different result. Some of the feedback we got actually from the state was they want us to be open and transparent a lot more. So the first time we built this, it was very cloak and dagger. You know, we compete against Providence. And so we made sure not to share our plans, and the city really wanted us and pushed us to say, you need to understand how this fits into the macro ecosystem of our community. And so in the second attempt of this, we're just being really open and transparent about what we want to build, really what our objectives are, the needs we are feeling and seeing, and then really garner feedback from the community on your opinions and how you feel about impact.
Thank you, Hank. We'll take a moment and then questions from the board first, and then the room, and then online behind you. If there are hands up, I'll be looking there.
I have a hand behind me. Here's a great view of my backside.
Well, we have a question right here on the board, so you can see.
I think you mentioned feedback from the city. Wasn't the last time it was the State Department of Health that was deciding whether or not to go ahead?
It really, it really feels like a combination of both. As they review it for the city, they really rely on the municipality understanding what the emergency medicine need is, but you're absolutely correct. A certificate of need is held at the state level.
Is there a formal position within the municipality for the municipality to make a recommendation?
They have come out as agnostic.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, question. Yeah, thanks for coming down. You're going to be in the Hupman Business Park. Like, is that attached to on the end of cars or in where the other medical facilities are in that area?
So it actually will be its own freestanding site. We purchased land in that zone. It'll be a new building. We're not going to retrofit an older building. The infrastructure is kind of unique for facilities, and to retrofit is really challenging. It just makes sense just to put the investment in and build something from scratch.
So like, it gets pretty congested. Are you worried about are you going to put new roads in, or is it just going to use existing roads to access your?
So brighter minds than I. I'll be transparent. I evaluated the city of Anchorage based on traffic patterns, and they have a whole formula that goes into how and why and where they select these sites. This was one of two sites that was sort of evaluated, and it was land we were able to capture, and so we don't anticipate any interruptions in terms of the traffic based on the formula that they have. Again, brighter minds than me.
Mr. Sheenold, thank you for coming down. Earlier in your previous application, weren't there some concerns about the checking someone into an emergency room and then checking them back out to move into a higher care facility? I recall hearing some feedback that that said that it could actually increase the amount of time it takes to bring someone to higher levels of care.
Sure. This is a couple of factors, I think, that go into that. The first and foremost is how do EMS know where to transport a patient? And the reality is, is that our EMS are highly skilled clinicians. They operate in the field of diagnosing and triaging care every single day that they're out there. And as I have sat down with all of the fire chiefs in Anchorage, Girdwood, Chugiak, really, I say to them, do you feel comfortable in your ability to triage in the field? They say, it's our job. Don't insult us. You know, we worry about the other bases. Furthermore, the medical director oversees programs. I think it's Dr. Levy. Creates care pathways that designate care and what's appropriate for each of these facilities. This really would be no different. I'll be the first to stand up and say, I don't want a trauma coming into a freestanding emergency room because it's not equipped with an OR right next to it. That also said, you know, Alaska Regional isn't a trauma center, so we don't necessarily want level one traumas coming to that facility. We really do want to steer that care to Providence where they are certified and set up for that level of care. In terms of the admission of that patient, there was a lot of misconceptions around that. I view it as virtual bed, and that's how we view it as well. And so if you were to come into the freestanding emergency room, and God forbid, you have to be admitted. We actually facilitate the transport from the freestanding ED to the facility free of charge. We just view it as just a longer hallway. You still have access to the same telemedicine resources, advanced imaging, emergency medicine. We can handle comprehensive strokes. They fall under the same accreditation and joint commission guidelines. And so it really becomes an extension of the facility without increasing cost for the patient.
Thank you.
Sir.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have one. It's curious to me that, excuse me, that you, the Alaska Regional, would be the ones leading the charge on this, given that your divert dates look like they're going to be started. So am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, and we've seen actually a significant shift in the market share. You know, last year, we treated 40,000 patients through a 16-bed emergency room. And that's a lot of patients to fit through a very small space. Our goal, these patients have to go somewhere. And so when you talk to our EMS partners, they say, you know, you can't just say, no more EMS. These patients have to be offloaded. They have to be seen. So our goal is to remain open to the community as much as possible. And so we've really felt the compression in terms of emergency resources, probably more acutely, because we sort of refuse to go undervert. We're always trying to remain open at all costs. I think the few occasions we have to is when we do get a trauma rolling through the door, and it draws so many emergency resources that we have to put pause. And usually that happens because the main trauma center in town is already undervert. So yeah, we're sort of leading the charge because we really, really feel the volume. The city or the state recommendations is 1,500 visits, patients per room per year. We sit at about 2,600. So we're over 1,000 visits above the state recommendations.
One question.
Yeah. So you're doing the guy at the Alaska Regional Hospital. I saw your emails, or you shared, just a public treatment company. So what's the business approach?
Sure.
It's HCA, if anything, we own the hospital.
Yeah, so HCA is our parent company, and they do own the facility.
Today, I was getting five patients. They are less.
So they've been operating in the state of Alaska since the 70s at Alaska Regional Hospital. Yeah, and we're a fan of, I'm a fan, we're a paid estate, not just because I drive the Kool-Aid, but they really do allow us to tap into a lot of best practices and benchmark nationally in terms of the quality of patient care, and then, of course, the investment in resources. And, you know, we do a lot of really complex spine robotics. We just got total joint robotics, and so we're able to tap into a lot of really amazing resources and data that we would not normally get. But I think they really push us to up the level of care that we provide to Alaskans here, and they see the acute need. I mean, they see 40,000 visits coming to a 16-bed ED, and I have to answer weekly as to what are the next steps you're taking? You need to offload this volume. That's not optimal patient care in terms of seeing that many patients through that space.
Any other questions right now from the board? Very neat. Thank you so much, Hank, for coming down, and if you had any more closing statements you have just.
No, I'm a talker. I think I've said enough. I leave these behind. If you have any questions at all, there's a few emails on there. Feel free to reach out. We are going to be submitting probably next month. We encourage that if you are in support of this project, please write in a letter. It goes a long way for the state legislatures, regulators, to hear your voices. And so there is a period where we'll reach back out and say, hey, we've submitted. We would love a letter of support. And if not, please let me know. If you have more questions or you're unsure about how this could potentially work, we encourage you also to reach out. Thank you for your time.
You have a good evening. Number four on the agenda is the legislative report. I just saw Senator Kathy Geisell online. You're there, Kathy. Will you join us?
I am here. Hi, thanks very much. Yeah, I think I had a wrong link before. I'm sorry I got on late because I missed a couple interesting topics, it looks like. Yeah, so the legislature adjourned at 10 minutes to midnight last Wednesday night. And I think I've already talked to you guys last month about getting the funding for for Little Bears. That, of course, is in the budget. I'm hoping the governor doesn't veto it. But the big bills that passed, for me anyway, were energy bills, the transmission grid bill, and the carbon capture and sequestration. But there were lots of other things that passed. We did get $680 per student for education funding put into the operating budget. It is a one-year appropriation, which means we're all, we're back at the same table next year fighting over this. Hopefully, the governor will not veto that number down as he did last year. He said he would not. We'll see what happens. There were other interesting subjects that passed. For example, we passed a bill that will allow women to get a 12-month supply of birth control now versus the three-month limitation that had previously existed. We renewed the Alaska Performance Scholarship legislation. There was, there were quite a few fishery things that passed. Internet for schools. We upgraded the, we actually accessed the federal money that would increase the internet speed for rural schools. So that was great. They certainly, they certainly need better internet connection. I worked with Genevieve Mina, and she and I collaborated to pass an improved SNAP program. SNAP is the food stamps, but there's a better way to do it. It's called, you know what? I can't remember what, BBCE, and I can't remember what that acronym stands for right now. I'm still recovering from that very long session. But happy to take any questions. Right now, the Governor's Sustainable Energy Conference is going on down at the Denina this week. Some pretty interesting subjects being presented. So happy to take questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Geisell, and congratulations on finishing the session. Are there any questions from the board? There's no questions for you tonight, so thank you. Oh, we have one online, one online. Jerry or Carol?
Hi, this is Jerry Fox. My understanding is that the Cooper Landing bypass was left out of the STIP because the governor's priorities were put in, but then they had to be taken out at the last minute to make the STIP, you know, federally approved. But the other projects didn't get put back in, and right now, there's no money for the Cooper Landing bypass. I don't know whether either I want to talk to, but I think there can be amendment to the STIP still coming up. And I'm just wondering, I'm going to write you an email, but I don't know who exactly to talk to.
Jerry, do send me an email. What I will do is inquire of the department. I will tell you, I don't immerse myself in the STIP. It's complex. But I know who to contact in the Department of Transportation. Shoot me an email. I'll explore that. I'll get you the answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, we have one in the room. Come forward so she can hear you a little bit. Please. I have to stand. Just that close.
Hi, Ms. Geisell. Linda Mankoff, Girdwood Health Clinic. On the BBCE, I understood you said it passed. So what does that mean in terms of it being implemented for it to start making a difference for people who are applying for that benefit?
Yes, it's an expedited way of of applying, and it doesn't have the asset test that the previous, well, the current SNAP program has. So it allows people to be able to save, take an extra job, take an increase in pay, and be able to save money, also to own a car. It's that the ownership of a car will not kick them out of food stamps. So right now, the department is going to have to write the regulations for it and also register with the federal government. It's a federal food stamp program. So that will take a few months. I'm not sure how many. Typically, that kind of process can take sometimes up to a year. But again, I can, let me check into that and see how quickly they can implement that.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And did we have one more online? Did Crystal have her hand up?
She did. Sorry.
I just wanted to extend my gratitude to Senator Geisell about the Girdwood Workforce Childcare Project and, you know, anything you did to help us get that amount in the budget is just really, really appreciated. Is there anything in particular that you recommend that we do so that we don't need to worry about a veto? Do we just leave it alone where it is and hope that it gets through, or do you recommend that we write letters of support, et cetera? Thank you.
You know, Crystal, it never hurts to write letters of support. One of the other bills or policies, I'll put it as a policy that we got passed actually a few minutes before adjournment, was the childcare tax credit. And so childcare, the governor has talked about how much he wants to be a family-friendly state, and he was expressing how much childcare means to families and how important it is. I would suggest you write letters of support for the Little Bears appropriation, that $500,000, just to underscore that this is part of the family-friendly state of Alaska that he envisions.
Great. Thank you very much. I've sent a thank you to his, the Shereen, but I will continue to, I guess, encourage others. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Senator Geisell.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night. Is Randy Salt or Zach Johnson on anywhere?
I don't think they are.
Okay.
Nope.
Move to the next one. Margot Bellamy from Anchorage School Board is in the packet, or there's a link, and that's quite a bit of information. So if anyone has time after the meeting to read through it, you'll be all updated. Next is HLBC Girdwood Representative Report option for Tim Sharnan. There's a meeting this week, Thursday, for HLBC. Okay.
Yeah.
No.
No report.
All right, great. Next is number five, Supervisor Upcoming Items with asterisk Discuss Meeting Dates for 2025 Budget Meetings. Shall we just?
Do you want to start with the things that you guys have upcoming, or do you want to talk about?
Are you looking?
It's a separate item. Related, but I thought that you guys wanted to bring up any items that you have upcoming separately?
I kind of did. So I have a budget conflict, or sorry, a time conflict that basically runs from July 11th to August 12th. And so I will do everything I can to make meetings during that. It's not a vacation. But it's very, that one's very complicated for me.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is there anything else I need to check on number five?
So as far as the budget meetings go, there's usually at least two, but possibly three, and I know that we wanted to invite or be certain that the Fire Department Board could attend at least one of them as well. And probably the first one was kind of where we were landing on this. It was a few months ago that we talked about it. So anyway, I think the way to go forward is to do polling and figure out when we can all get together.
Can you remind us the date we typically need, I think it's only a recommendation to go forward, that's September.
Usually September, but yeah.
Right. The goal is to have everything and for you to vote on it by your September regular meeting.
I think the bottom of these last couple of years, scheduling three, last one's optional, but it is, it's been a good.
Yeah.
And so I guess I'm looking for feedback on whether you want to avoid the dates that Jennifer's unavailable, or do you want to try and front-load it or?
We usually try to introduce one in July, and then, you know, I think it's like Margaret mentioned, it's important to meet with the board, the Fire Board as well this time, so that they're on board for the beginning of the budget process and not for chief to have to scramble at the end trying to get a board meeting with them set up. I mean, at this point in time, we'll stick with July and see how things work out, and, you know, we can always bring Jennifer up to speed as to what happened with that first meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification and information. I would, with that, I would suggest the polling, but to include a few dates in July that are before the 11th, not a few, but one thing that's after the holiday, and then maybe one more in July in case that one doesn't pan out for a forum, and then the rest in August.
Okay.
Not too squished into August, end of August. Would be a good question. Okay, thank you.
I did have one last quick question. Do you anticipate having the information on last year's fund powers by July?
I usually get it in July. Yeah.
So in August?
Yeah, I'll start asking for it in June, but usually they have completed these for the service areas by July.
It's important. And next on the agenda is number six, Committee Updates. Two GBOS, three minutes each. These are items not on the agenda. Are there any items of interest to the community from subcommittees that are in the room or online? I don't hear any, but minutes are abundant online to check. Number seven is Proposed Girdwood Developments. The status of those is right there. Mike, do you have any updates to share?
This is actually, this table has not been updated since last month. Apologize for that. Now going through quickly from top to bottom, give you verbal updates and we'll update the table. Our home of this land has now been, the platting has been complete, and the land has now changed ownership, and some has reverted back to HLB. The next steps are developing a planned unit development and finding out who the consultant is, who's probably going to be appointed to the position to liaise to represent the municipality. It's challenging interest to liaise with the Girdwood. Second item we're discussing tonight, third item still uphold, Moshe City Center, it was approved, the changes. So there's no movement there. Thirty-nine, thirty-nine south townhouses is being discussed literally right now at the planning zone tonight. The next item, Alaska Serendipity is postponed. MSTAR, I was hoping would be here from tonight, it hasn't. Hotel retail store and lots of family housing is still awaiting further action. Go to Airport Lodge, the last meeting, we shared the information of the lease, of at least the lodge portions and not the, not the aviation sites. Lodge portion has been approved. I've been trying to get some more documents from DOT. I've got a Records Act request going in for that, so we'll get more information. And the last one is Alaska City Highway. There's no action there, unlikely to be.
Thank you, Mike, for updating on this. You should pay track of it. You should keep track of it. Next then, is the provider report, starting with Chief Weston, if you're online?
Hi there, I'll keep it short tonight, three things. First is, super excited about Chugatch Electric donating some free chipping to us on June 15th. You saw the flyer, the flyer's there. And this is our, probably our one opportunity to get the brush and dead and down branches that are in the community chipped for free. And then additionally, Alaska Wildlife Conservation Center will be there to take any live branches, branches with leaves for browse for the, for the wildlife, for animals down there at the Conservation Center. And then the chips will be used both at the Conservation Center and at Forest Fair Park, so super excited about that. Julie Haskins from Chugatch Electric had to step off the conference call, the, this team's meeting. But she did want me to remind you that they are doing line clearing this year along the right-of-way. And they will, if you have a danger tree which is near the right-of-way, you might be able to talk to them also about getting that tree also removed by the crew. And so that's good for wildfire and also for the reliability of our power grid not going out when we have downed trees online. And then, second item would be that we have, you'll see in June, you'll see the burn trailer show up, the state burn trailers show up in our parking lot. And we'll be doing burn training there, so we're super excited about that. This is a mobile trailer that travels around the state to help with fire training. And then finally, and we have 15 firefighters still going through firefighter one, and they should be done at the end of June. And then, third thing, a number of people have mentioned, have asked me about this. We did have some individuals driving around Girdwood on last Saturday that started three small fires. And that is under investigation still by Whittier Police. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Weston? I don't see any in the room, Chief Weston. Thank you so much for joining tonight while you can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Chief Ashay.
Chief Ashay cannot make it tonight.
And Kyle Kelly or Parkson?
Parks are in full swing, been a ton of work to get things set up. Our crew, Luke and John are on for the summer and they were able to get to the power washing, the tennis courts. We were almost to the point where we thought we had to repaint them, but we got it early enough before the sun really cooked it that they were able to clean the whole tennis court and look brand new again. So we appreciate them spending four days out there, two inches at a time, power washing those courts off to get that algae moss off. We do have a camp host in, her name is Ashley, and she has moved into the park and will be overseeing the campground pavilions for us this summer as volunteer hosts out there. And we want to give a big thanks on trails to the Colers and others, Ben, Ben Coler particularly, for going out and opening up the Beaver Pond Trail. That November storm took down a ton of huge spruce. And him and a few others got going out there, as they said, they started the choir with the snow, with the saws going and they cut up the whole trail. So it's open and people are riding it now and it's got some muddy spots. And we'll be addressing, we hauled in a ton of lumber this winter with the snow dogs and we're going to be working out there to get those muddy spots taken care of. So we'll be working out there and also shoring up or finishing up the bridge project we did through the winter as well. The Warner Creek Trail Bridge, the replacement for the hand tram, we have started the final phase of design and are working with Reed Militant, our structural engineer, to get that done. And we'll be pushing towards a bid package, hopefully this fall, to get that out on the streets so that we can build it next summer. And we'll be working through a fundraising effort to get the final sort of over-the-top. As I mentioned in previous meetings, we did get a $250,000 grant from Rasmussen. And we have about $225,000 probably still to raise, so we're going to work through that for the next year, next nine months, 10 months. As everything is opening up, if you see problems out there, feel free to reach out to Margaret and I, we'll try to address things. We are addressing the graffiti issues out there and the crew made a big progress today on addressing a lot of those areas. We have a ton of grants that we're either opening or still trying to get open from different organizations that we applied for and were successful. We're just now working through the federal aspect of getting those grants for trail projects and also for the Lions Club Park. So mostly just answering questions and details that they still need. And as always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our social media and website updated. Switching over the roads, we have started the spring grading. We've, we've had to wait for the, the temperatures to come up and then, and get going on that. So they started today on timberline and they'll be doing all the roads as weather allows here over the next two weeks. And then applying calcium as conditions allow for dust suppression. So the crew will be working out there doing that. And then we are finishing up the final things to get a bid package out for the new fish culvert on the Bottom Valias Creek there at Davos. We hope to have that out on the street here soon for bid. And then we're working through the EPA grant for the ruing fish culvert, box culvert, to replace the temporary culvert they put in after the Halloween storm a few years ago. And working with A-Win Partnership to get the 1.6 million for that, so that those two things are in motion as we go. Expense and budget-wise, we're right where we need to be for this time of year. About 42% of the budget for roads expended, 42 for parks. And police about in the 40 range, and then fire. A lot of the fires front-loaded early, so it's right where it needs to be there. One thing we did notice about fire this year was a significant jump in IGCs with first quarter revisions. It went up something like 90 something thousand dollars. And most of it was in the vehicle maintenance section. So that's something we'll examine as we go forward, especially as we start to talk budgets for '25. But that was something we saw there. But overall, our mill rate was established for this year and we have a mill rate of 5.36 of, we can go up to six mills. So, you know, we're about two-thirds below what a cap is for us. So that's usually right where we are, so it's all, it's all working out there. So that's just what's going on in operations, any questions?
Thank you, Kyle, lots going on. And question, Guy?
Those IGCs, was? Was that, do we know, you're going to talk to them about that, see if it's going to be an annual thing going forward? Increase in a merge?
Well, we can easily take a look at the storks on it and usually you do see a small increase on it. What the Fire Department has dealt with a lot in the last couple of years is aging equipment. And they've had in, you know, they had a full engine replacement on one of the utilities. And they had, actually maybe two of the utilities, and then they had quite a bit of pump issues with the tender, which right now the new tender is being built, and then the ancient 41, which is at 25 years, has had issues. And so there's been a lot of shop time. So I can understand why the increase was there and then parts and labor are not getting any cheaper. So, but I think it is worthy of discussion to find out if there's going to be a significant increase next year. And it really depends on the leadership. It does look like we're going to have administration change, and so who's going to be the new fire chief? Will the same fire chief be there? You know, all those things are factors on how those IGCs get calculated each year.
They seem like during, I think it's the first, we're looking at the budget, you know, with revisions and commented on the IGC has been really low at that time, and maybe they do, they just weren't updated or they.
Well, always keep in mind is when I give you budgets, I don't know what IGCs are going to be. And, and so I usually keep the IGC, and for those who don't know what IGC is, it's an intergovernment charge. So we have a different department works with us, they charge us for their services, so like building maintenance or in this case, fleet services for the municipality Fire Department, they charge at a rate. So that rate, I give you the flat from the year before. And then within the, when they give out their budgets, we see what the increase is going to be. But then sometimes through first quarter revisions, they may increase it even more as they take more time to learn about it, so.
Yeah, that'd be worth following up, I mean, that for the fire here, I would say it's over $300,000. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's $340,000 in IGCs.
Chief Weston has her hand up, so she might have something to add about that.
Um, I will say that, one of the things that also has happened, besides the aging equipment and everything, is that there's new personnel at Anchorage Fire in leadership overseeing the shop and then also the budget process, in the finance. And so they might be doing some sort of background historical knowledge stuff or historical analysis to see where they get to. So just wanted to mention that and we'll be following up with them on, on how the IGCs came to be like that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you, Kyle. Mike, did you have one?
Yeah, I did. So, those who have been walking around this area of town, it's, last week there were camping abatement notices posted last Tuesday, I think a 10-day, 10-day window, can you give us just update?
So there was an abatement posting for encampments in both in Town Square and the Girdwood Park area last Tuesday, it's a 10-day notice. And so that notice goes active, abatement can go active on Friday. And so it's a system or procedures and policies that we follow with, through from the municipality of Anchorage, through Parks and Rec, the Health Department. And then in this case, APD did assist Whittier, because Whittier hasn't done this before. But APD doesn't have jurisdiction here, so it's more of a, a cost or a, basically education for them. So on Friday, the abatement process can begin. And at that point, people would have to leave those zones if they're camping within those areas.
And have you had much feedback on this from anyone?
Oh, yeah, I got some feedback, so, yeah. But, you know, it's, it's from both sides, so, but the, the process has begun, so.
I think what we probably expect is people to move around rather than, the problem to disperse to some extent.
Yeah, that's probably a good experience. I don't know what will happen, but some people have actually moved out and found places that are more, more stable and in better locations. So people did outreach on Facebook and found places to stay, so, so there are opportunities out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Kyle? All right, we'll move to public comment. Public persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. And public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects, not listed on the agenda. Are there any people here for public comment in the room? Anyone online? Right, hearing none, oh, you do? Yes, okay, please forward.
I'm glad Chief Weston is still on there. I just wanted to thank her and the Fire Department for partnering with us for the Ride Your Bike To Work Day. It was one of the most successful events that we've had riding your bike to work. I mean, because usually it's raining, it's not great weather. The weather was great, I would say there was probably 30-ish people who stopped at our stand and got snacks and t-shirts. And then another 20 people that I saw later even helped me break down the tent and stuff. So thank you, Chief Weston, for that, I appreciate that. So that's all I want to say, been a great event.
So, thank you for helping with that. All right, we'll now go to number nine, Agenda Item LUC 2403-04, Update Action On LUC GBOS Joint Meeting And Request For GBOS Resolution Of Support For The Girdwood Comprehensive Plan.
I have a discussion, thank you. So Chair, if you go to it, it's effective, yeah, it's a process, it should be refused.
I would.
Any questions to ask me in which case I'm off?
Okay, thank you, Mike, and I would rule that you are recused from this discussion and therefore the action. Hearing no objections, we'll move with this item. Anyone like to start this? Margaret?
This is really just placeholder at this point because the comprehensive plan is still under review at planning and zoning, prior to planning and zoning. It's just, I think, put where it is in order to establish that that item is not yet complete as it relates to other topics.
I appreciate the placeholder and that makes sense with the timeline bubbles that we've been seeing, so.
I think probably Mike wants to come back pretty soon. Oh, Max, you didn't go very far.
He's hiding. Okay, thank you. Number 10, Agenda Item LUC 2402-GBOS MA, Alias Resort Request For Resolution Support For Modifications To The Alias Resort Master Plan. Yes?
Two reasons, I'm not, now the next two issues are most disclosures. So my spouse is, I guess, so my two's telling that, want to state the potential interest.
Thank you for stating your disclosure. We do have a list of questions, but I would ask if this would be categorized as a financial or personal interest of significance?
Can you go through the questions?
I think they're up here.
The government, yeah.
Yeah, I have one of us grabbed.
First time.
In the notebook, huh?
Margaret had a nice laminated piece, so that helps us not rain every day. Thank you. Okay. All right, the detailed description of the interest is that your spouse works for the resort. Is the interest financial or personal? What is the size of the interest if it's financial?
It's a job.
Like significant? And who holds the interest?
It's my spouse.
And when did this interest arise?
Several years ago, started working.
This description allows us to determine whether it was in the past, present, future, or might arise in the future. So the question next is how does the matter before the body impact the interest specifically? Is the interest a substantial part of the matter under consideration?
I'm assuming that's no.
Does the impact on the interest directly vary with the outcome of the official action?
Soon, though.
Is the impact on the interest immediate or conjectural and dependent on factors beyond the official action?
Conjectural.
Do you believe your interest prevents you from placing the public interest on the official action above your private interest? Do you believe you should be excused from participation in the official action on this manner?
I think it's close, not that, but. It's in the move with the chair.
Okay. Well, as far as we've done in the past, the chair can rule or we can also vote. But, and this is all business, so we will be acting and voting on this item. I would rule that this item has a, does not rise to the significance of our board member not to be able to participate. And anyone is welcome to oppose that ruling. Okay, hearing none, Mike, you may participate. Thank you for practicing through that. I could read the entire agenda item for number 10, but I think I'll go to the P and Z case number 2024-0061. Are we going to split these up, number 10 and number 11?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Five, do, what are you going to do?
It might be helpful to say why they're different. If you're ready to start. So Willem is speaking for number 10 and 11.
I'll just steal the screen. I'll first just start off by saying, yes, we are seeking a resolution of support for modification to the Alias Resort Area Master Plan and a Development Master Plan Phase One of this phase development. So, thank you, Girdwood Force Supervisors, for hearing this presentation again. This will be a condensed version of what we went through at the Town Hall Community Meeting and similar to what, or exactly the same as what we looked at during the LUC meeting. So just to go over project again. Yeah. And just to make sure it's clear, this photo here is a image of the current area master plan, not the amended version that we are going for. So this is the 2007, 2008 master plan that was completed by the previous owner here. And, you know, several years ago, we started looking at this plan, evaluating different opportunities to develop. There was quite a bit of thought planning that went into this with.
There was quite a bit of thought planning that went into this with SE Group, the master planners. And then with our architecture team and our consulting and construction team. So that includes Skylab Architecture, Ironwood Water some Construction and various consultants. A few of them are online with us, but the basis of this whole plan is very spread out and you know, there were a lot of challenges, including avalanche risk, topography, that was quite a big one and wetlands as well, which impact, you know, so much of the land in Gerwood and affect its developability. So what you see over in the top corner here, top left is Alias Resort and what was proposed over there was similar to what we're looking at, a village style ski area. And then there was no development proposed in track B. Let me just switch so I can see this a little better. So there's no development proposed in track B. There was several little developments within track C on track D and then closer to the day lodge as well. It was pretty dense, but this area has a lot of avalanche risk. There's a lot of topographic issues that look at much of the site. So again, working with SE Group and Skylab, we came up with a plan that focused a lot of development around tracks A, tracks B, and the area up here, which is track I, which we are hoping to amend into track A as part of the amendment. And just to go into these areas in more detail, this area is being referred to as Alias Village. This is track A. This is Musmatos Village, track B, and Glacier Creek Village, the expansion to track A. Those are those three areas. So just looking at them in more depth, track A is really meant to be a pedestrian focused skier village. This whole area within the middle of these buildings is walkable, similar to what you might see at other ski villages in the Lower Forty Eight or Canada or anywhere. There's several like colored buildings in here, which are all new proposed buildings. So three larger buildings are condominiums with ground floor retail. And these are really meant to foster new business. We've gotten a lot of inquiries since the community meeting. And I think, you know, some of what we're looking at would be just absolutely great for the community. This is a new conference center over here, and the effort with this building is to just be able to attract larger events to Gerwood. And then over number four over here is a small extension to the current hotel Alias. And the the goal here is really just for continuity and design and to just have more commercial offering. And then number two, right in front of the Nordic Spa, is currently planned as a new ski school. And then this road here is a new extension off of the current tram circle. And then this would be a new drop off area in front of this main building and a new parking area as well. And there's an additional drop off at this part of the new parking lot, which would feed into the east side of the village. And again, this drop off here feeding into the west side of the village, which is meant to serve this building, the general village, the conference center, et cetera. On the track B side, this was really meant to be quite a community focused area. So right now we have our current staff housing one and staff housing two building. All of these buildings, aside from these two larger ones to the south, will be new workforce housing units for Gerwood. So these will not just be for resort employees, but we will be working with businesses in Gerwood so that every business will have places for their employees to live. And the idea here was, you know, as much as it is a challenge for the resort, we know it's a challenge for other businesses here as well. And, you know, as we went through the process of looking at what type of units to build, you know, we really we, well, first off, we surveyed our employees for it to to find out, you know, what they really wanted. And what came out is that in this is that, you know, people didn't want to just have studios or bedrooms. But so the the idea here is as you move back in the phases of this development, I mean, you're starting off with smaller units. In the first phase, we're proposing dorm style units. As you move back, you'll have one bedroom, two bedroom, and then eventually a townhome rental because people want to move up here with their families, with their spouses, with the dogs. So, um, yeah, we wanted to be able to provide that, just provide a place where people could live and grow and create a family here too. In this area as well, we have Little Bears Daycare, that's number five, right in front of the childy parking lot. So that is going to be a great addition to this whole development. The building is currently 10,000 square feet and that will increase childcare to, I believe it's a hundred kids. Correct me if I'm wrong, Crystal. And then the rec center is this large facility here. So this will be aquatic center, a fitness center, and a covered open air hockey rink, NHL regulation size, because we want to be able to host some cool events here too. But this will be a dedicated community facility. I know last time on the LUC meeting, Mike, you asked me if we had anything inked for this. We do have an LOI signed that will keep this a community facility. I can't share who it is yet, but we will do the release for that hopefully the next week. So maybe by the planning and zoning meeting, but this will, yeah, be a community center. And the last neighborhood here. So this is, actually, I might go back quickly, just talk about the phasing of those first two areas. Apologies for that. So looking at this overall map here, just for A and B, so tracks A and B, we are looking at this in three phases and we're looking to, I mean, essentially can start construction on this in spring of 2025. But the way we will be doing this is, you know, as a portion of track A is built out, a portion of track B is built out. The first phase, we want to include forty three units of workforce housing, the daycare, the recreation center and hockey rink and pool. And then while we're doing that, we're building up the conference center, the ski school, the hotel extension and the condo one building, as well as the parking on E and R lines and the parking and access road that comes out this way. So that will be in three separate phases. The second one will be another condo building, more workforce housing, and then finally another condo building and the last workforce housing. And then on the fourth phase, we will look at Glacier Creek Village. And let me scroll back down to that. So the idea with this area was to create a trails oriented community. And just for reference, this green trail here is not existing. This is a proposed trail that we worked with the I can't recall the name, but the person who designed this forest loop for Gerwood Trails.
Bill Spencer.
Sorry?
Bill Spencer.
Bill Spencer, that's it. Yeah, we, Skylab and our team worked with him to, you know, look at different iterations of his forest loop and work through some plans for that. And, you know, the the goal of this whole area, again, create a trails oriented community where people can actually buy homes. Many of the smaller units to the south are posed as attainable housing or purchase. And we will be providing priority access to first time home buyers that are also members of this community. So this is going to be an opportunity for people to buy homes here. And, I mean, what we're proposing in workforce housing is great, it is rental, but what we got as feedback during our initial town hall that we hosted at the Suits Mark with y'all is that people also want the opportunity to buy here and they're often being priced out by general market conditions. So that is something that, you know, when we initially planned this neighborhood wasn't included, but as feedback, we included in this area. So we want to be able to provide housing for people who want to live here, grow here, bring a family here. People in Anchorage who have not had the opportunity to buy here, people in Gerwood who haven't had the opportunity to buy here. And just create an awesome neighborhood that, you know, provides even better access to trails. And now this does cross over with trails, but we think we can work with Trails Committee to find, you know, a great opportunity, whether that's trail overpass or some other idea, like there's definitely great options to work through this that we've looked at. You know, multiple other mountain towns as to how they have achieved it as well. Within this area too, we wanted to provide the, sorry, a Nordic ski facility that would align with this Nordic trail as well, just as kind of like a warming hut. Someplace where you can go out for a day of skiing and have your lunch by a fire or something like that. And this general landing area over here is a new parking lot. And again, that's to provide better access to trails. That's a lot more feedback we got, especially with the current Nordic ski parking lot is that it often fills up quite a bit. So providing more access to different parts of trails was was needed. So something else that is a bit of a cool feature is this little box right here by the five and the line that shoots out of it is a pulse gondola lift and that will connect the Glacier Creek neighborhood to the Alias Village. And that's in an effort to reduce the need for cars overall. So if you're staying at the hotel, if you're living in the village, you know, you can take a pulse gondola out here, go for your Nordic ski, go to trails. And additionally, if you live in this neighborhood, you can take that pulse gondola back to the base of the mountain. So essentially making all of these units close to ski in, ski out. But provides a kind of just a cool feature to this overall development. Yeah, I mean, I know you've you've heard me talk about this many times, the goal here is housing. It's been asked for so many times in a lot of Gerwood meetings and yeah, that that is the goal of this area. Now moving on to the first phase development master plan. So like I said before, the first phase includes the first condo building, the conference center, the hotel extension and the ski school building over here, as well as the parking lot and associated infrastructure to get out there. What's not included is actually the parking lot that is north of this, but we do hope to include that. On the track B side, it is forty three units of excuse me, workforce housing. And there will also be ground floor retail in this building as well. We got hopefully a great tenant going in there. And then the daycare and hockey rink and rec center. So that's what we're looking at for a while. Kind of already took you through detail on this, but here's a zoomed in version of that. And here are some renderings of Phase One. So this is the condo one building and this would be the new parking lot to the left of it. And you essentially walk down, you know, this pedestrian walkway. And if you picture it where those trees are on the lower left. And over this section would essentially be condo two and then condo three. But this road right here in the middle will go into underground parking. Each phase includes underground parking. And what you're looking at here again with the pedestrian walkway would be your ground floor retail with three levels of condos above. So that pedestrian walkway continues level through this area and actually passes on the backside of the ski school. And then you also have an option to walk down to level with the hotel, and that would be kind of a lower access area for retail. This is the conference center over here, right in front of the Hotel Alias and the hotel extension and ski school building. And you can see the tram building there in the back of the mountain. This would be the view as you approach from the parking lots of condo building right there. And then the new conference center. This should fit about 600 people in it for pretty large events. We've had to actually turn away events at Alias because the conference center was built too small. So, yeah, we wanted to be able to track this some some bigger events here more consistently and just have an awesome venue for it. And then this is another view of the conference or the condo building here. And so as you can see, ground floor retail on the sublevel as well as this first level, and then three levels of condos above. And this bridge actually comes across and that's what connects kind of that walkway area with the ski school back at the back of the ski school. So that would pass in between the Nordic spa and the the ski school back, just to try and picture that. I can probably get some other views for if you really wanted to see that. And then again, this is, you know, as you come down those steps in front of condo one, you're looking towards the tram building here. This is the ski school building here and the hotel extension. And there's another bridge crossing here. So this will connect a bit of a punch out from the hotel and will bring you to that upper level area of the ski school. Then looking at track B. So just on the right here is your first phase of workforce housing, as well as the ground floor retail associated with that. And then you have the rec center and hockey rink pool in the back here. This is another view of workforce housing loans. Again, you got your retail on the ground floor, two levels of workforce housing on top. And this is a view of what we'd be looking at for the open air covered ice rink. And, you know, you have a fitness center that would be looking out onto it. And then on that subfloor below the fitness center, you'd be looking at your change rooms for the hockey rink where you park your Zamboni. And also your workforce housing in the back there as well. And then this image shows Little Bears Daycare over here on the right. The ice rink and community center and workforce housing as well. So just the idea of what it could look like in the future. And that is it for that case. So.
Okay, we played twenty minutes.
Oh, do I have twenty minutes for this?
No, I'm just.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Tom. So that's the first number ten you're saying.
Yeah.
And that ask, could you just rephrase the ask for the support you're speaking on?
Yes. So we would like a resolution of support for our modification to the Alias Resort Area Master Plan and Phase One Development Master Plan.
Thank you. Would anyone on the board like to say where this the plan used?
Awesome. Just a couple of quick questions for you. Thank you very much for the update on the rec center.
Oh, yeah.
I'm really hoping you'd be able to say group this today, but I look forward to that next time. The to the 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 partner will be providing both funding and then operations or is it going to be separate group funding and separate doing operations?
It'll be a combination.
So it'll be two different.
Oh, no, sorry. Yes, they will. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And the other question I had, somebody asked me this, the in the development master plan, is there any changes to how you how you're going to do lighting relative to what Title 21? Because Title 21 tends to go on the quote on my test.
Yeah. I believe we have Carla Robin online. Carla Robin, Mike, if you if you heard Mike there, just with regards to lighting. Maybe you could jump in.
Hi, this is Robin Wilcock to Skylab Architecture. Carl, I think you might have a little bit more detail on this. I think we're very interested in providing the adequate levels of lighting in the area, but. levels of lighting in the area, but um, also want to make sure that we are uh, not having uh, I guess uplighting, leaving the site and trying to control that lighting a little bit better than maybe what's happening, like especially in track B around some of the parking areas right now. I don't know, Mike, is there a specific uh, uh, thing you're asking for or you want to know about the lighting?
Yeah, specifically then, are you, are you asking the development master plan, are you asking for any uh, changes to existing um, code for lighting? Cause my understanding is the existing code for lighting doesn't um, require minimizing uplight.
We don't have any, we're not asking for any uh, alternates to any of the design standards relative to lighting.
Okay. So you're thinking with, with the coders exist now, then you think you can produce something which uh, which has adequate lighting at uh, at ground level where it matters for the users of the, of the facility, but doesn't end up being illumination. You know, the sky and the whole up and down the valley.
Yes, yeah, that's our strategy.
Speed, I mean, a little bit about it. We are looking at shorter, more frequent light poles for the parking lighting. Okay, and we're just having billing lighted, downlights where we can or billing mounted, sorry, downlights where we can. So rather than big, tall, high lumen fixtures, we're trying to put more frequent lower lumen.
Can you just, can you just introduce who?
Oh, sorry. I'm Jared Zeke uh, with Ironwood, part of the construction team.
Uh, Ella Landry also, Ironwood. It's in our interest to minimize the light disruption due to the adjacent spot and condos. So I think.
And there's nothing, there's nothing in existing code which actually makes that a harder job.
No, I mean, we have to, like I said, ride a few more fixtures and just achieve it without putting out quite as many lumen's per fixture, but I, I think we can absolutely achieve that.
Thanks. Thank you for introducing yourself and answering that. And Mike, did you have more for the introducing kind of item and only C left it?
So um, so just for, just for sake of our own meeting, um, this went before land use last week. Um, land use gave a sort of, I guess, conditional uh, approval. Um, the development master plan, there was no concern about for the area master plan. There was still concern, significant concern of uh, the development of Glacier Creek Village, uh, used to that amount. Um, so what we have on front of us is a um, is a resolution which is consistent, I believe, with uh, the land use action. So it basically says, so it's, I could, can you present that in the final call?
This has been
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, so in final form, it basically, uh, basically goes through uh, more positive. And then at the end points out that there's a ultimate between the community feedback on our comprehensive plan, which just got into uh, the planning and zoning process uh, for the land which is uh, been uh, being planned for uh, Glacier Creek. Uh, and then points out the community and ABC in particular. Uh, passed a resolution which shared does not approve the Glacier Creek, uh, part of the parliament, but does the other members. So that's what we have here. We have a resolution which is consistent with that. So I, I guess that would be this resolution that says.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, I guess I have a quick verification for the room or for us that is this what we're looking at on the screen applied to both ten and eleven?
No, this is just a tip.
Just number ten. And Jennifer, do you have more to add? Any, any comments from the board?
Yes.
For the comment question for Mr. Lowing, please. Um, the uh, the parking that is going to be um, built over on the um, DNR land, that is going to um, bring back the parking lots that are going to be taken out of the supply over in track B. And then is it, are you going to, how many parking spaces are you going to be increasing the inventory by?
Yeah. So we have parking study done uh, for this development updated. Um, just with the actual usable parking spots, which was around six hundred for that track A and track B area. And so what we would be looking at in phase one is eight hundred fifty spots. And then with all three phases completed, we'd be looking at anywhere from about twelve fifty to thirteen hundred. So it would be more than doubling.
More than doubling. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, a question I didn't think of it till now when you're going through your presentation. Thanks for that. Um, said your um, convention center will hold about six hundred people. The, so if I understand correctly, the condos are going to be privately owned or, and those aren't nightly rooms. I mean, they, they could be, but you're not adding any more beds to the hotel, right?
So the uh, portions of the condo buildings will be condo hotel units. So uh, within phase one, we're estimating seven, eight units, probably about sixty, roughly sixty of them will be condo hotel units. So uh, owners of those will have the option to, uh, you know, when they're not in use, uh, be able to put those into the rental pool for the hotel, which we will manage.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, I mean, conventions are great and bringing the six hundred people, I don't think that you have your hotel.
Yeah.
Fill you up with it.
Sure. Yeah, we, we looked at a lot of different um, different condo hotel models. They're pretty common in just about every um, ski market in North America. Every, every market has different ways of doing them. Some give you, you know, complete freedom. Some limit you a little bit. So we're still, I mean, you know, figuring that out. Um, but it did provide, you know, some people are really only there for, for ski season, maybe sometimes during the summer for some events. But it does provide uh, you know, revenue sharing um, through uh, the hotel and managing it as well. So um, yeah, I mean, it's in some people's interest just to have it act as a hotel room.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board or next? Yeah, Mike and then Brian. Okay, Brian.
Thank you. Um, is there going to be a uh, a Palmeroy corporate office um, complex put together? Is there going to be a more of a presence in the community from Palmeroy? Is there going to be a physical office building with um, with staff?
Um, I mean, we don't plan to build an office building for, for our staff. No, I, I, we have some onsite office that's used. Um, but no, we're not planning on building an office building.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Mike's comment is actually about the uh, the Intel condo.
Sure.
I think I was, maybe I misunderstood something. I thought they were all going to be at Intel condo. So that just eight, eighteen won't.
Uh, I mean, we're still, yeah, there, there's not a clear number that will be, but it's, it's around that, I believe, right now. Yeah.
So about eighty percent will, about twenty percent won't. And is that roughly the um, what you would expect with the other two condo units as well? I'm just thinking in terms of how much.
Not necessarily. It's to the hotel. We will see what the demand for that product is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll be a learning.
Okay. Lots of learning.
Okay. We have one in the room. Please say your name.
Hi, my name is Lisa Miles and I'm on land use committee and um, I'm over on Saint Johann and I'm a renter. And I really want this comment to put, be put on record. When we had our land use committee meeting, I believe that by the names that I saw and the faces that I saw that were in attendance, that most of the individuals making that vote were landowners in Girdwood. And I want us to temper that when we look at this revision we've given on this letter that we're now sending as a message to the municipality of Anchorage. Because it is in the best interest of some of our trails people and people who have owned houses in Girdwood for a long time, to not have something like this. And I'm deeply concerned about that. And I think that I have read through all of the proposal and I hope that everyone else that has been, you know, asking questions and making decisions on this have also read through all of it in detail. Because some of the questions that people have asked have indicated that they haven't read through it in detail. This is a very well thought out master plan that is taking into consideration our traffic, our sewer, our housing needs, our community needs. For the first time ever, our childcare actually is going to be on its own land. It hasn't had that since Anchorage took Girdwood over. You know, it's been on H L B land. Now they're going to have their own space. There are so many wonderful things coming with this plan. And I would consider myself a tree hugger. And I have walked as much of that land as I possibly can. And I think that it is well, I think they've done their due diligence. And I think that it would be in the interest of our community not to shoot this down because I think this would be a valuable asset to our community. And if people don't have trust with Alieska, this isn't between us and Alieska. This is between Palmeroy, the developers and the municipality. This is a plan that is submitted with the municipality and there can be design standards. And the architectural firm that has put this together has an incredible ethic on so many things. You should see the work that they do. This has been very well thought. I wish that we could just give full support of this. And then as things come in development, then we can do like we do to every multifamily person out there and say, oh my goodness, you're gonna buy, you're gonna build three things. We're gonna freak out about it and we can take care of all of the trees at that point. But I feel like at this point now, I wish that we would offer support of this because this is the only hope I have of being able to actually own a home in Girdwood. Because they have voluntarily, we couldn't get that out of Connie and the Hilton Hills thing. They have voluntarily said that our HOA is not going to allow S T Rs in our part of the resort. Now, people are going to get really excited about that and they're going to feel really threatened. And they're going to be like, oh, I can't sell my houses and I can't make all my money because there's going to, because they're going to limit S T Rs. They're not telling us we're going to limit S T Rs in all of Girdwood. It's just for this part of the resort. So I feel like if everyone actually looked at this holistically, there would be a lot more support of this. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you. And everybody can hate me later.
Uh, yeah.
Um, yeah, Matt Schatter keeps people up. So for phase three, what's the um, what's, what's your expectation build in terms of single family homes versus uh, versus townhomes? What's the next in terms of what you're expecting?
Are you in workforce housing?
No, 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 no. I think number three, I don't know. On the last page of the row.
It's four?
Base four, sorry.
Yeah, um, we're, I mean, right now, we're probably planning for, I want to say eighty units of uh, they, they will all be detached homes.
Total, total.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. So we're, we're looking at some pretty awesome kind of tiny home models that one, two bedroom. Uh, A frames, some really cool um, stuff that Skylab has looked at in the past. Uh, but yeah, everything there is planned to be a single family.
And then you guys should send off further on the ring of gold. It gets bigger and bigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, from a financing perspective, we do, do you anticipate effectively a decent share of profitability coming from that phase four sale and then the other phases? It's, it's a lot of recurring, you know, kind of ongoing about the existing convention center. Thinking about profitability and return on investment.
Yeah.
How's this with taking?
Yeah, and a, a lot of that uh, benefit comes in that uh, later phase for us. Um, there's a lot of uh, I mean, there's a ton of upfront costs in developing village. There's tons of infrastructure that needs to be built. Um, a lot of sunk costs. So a lot of our uh, benefit and profits are, yes, deferred to the later phase, fourth phase and third phase as well, um, because so much work has to be done in that first and second phase. Uh, and you know, again, that's reason why we're able to um, address, I mean, yes, we wanted to address those community needs in the first phase, the workforce housing. Um, and the phases after that, and then also the uh, land for the community center, land for the daycare. Uh, because yeah, all of those can be technically built into condos if we wanted them to.
Okay, you, we have other people, but you have follow up?
No, so I actually kind of wanted to take a pick up on these. I think the community as a whole needs to think about what the trade offs, what the communities need to. And to the extent that, and we can disagree with Palmeroy on things with certain issues, but big picture. If the cost to get a affordable workforce housing into a lot of our community is also selling more housing that goes towards the high end where they're going to make their money, like that's the trade off. It's different time to try and get a return on investment, but we also have community needs. So when I hear people, you know, objectively voting against, you know, those kind of that, that phase in the back, it's by intermigrations to doing that, which is why I'm asking, watching. So, um,
Just to
Yeah.
Jump in there quick. I mean, there's still great community benefit in that last phase as well. It's great. Uh, I mean, that's the option or the area we're looking at for these tiny homes where we're going to provide, you know, priority for buyers for, for locals. Um, and then there's going to be hopefully some awesome Nordic trails in there where you can take a pull slip from the village and pop on your skis and you know, go, go out there, go to the warming hut, go to the five K loop. Um, yeah, right. It'll be pretty cool.
But the deal, the deal has to pass.
Correct.
Right. And I think, I think Girdwood is community needs to kind of, again, understand some of the, of, you know, the trade offs.
Thank you. Uh, we have one online first and I'll go to you, Luke. Uh, Brett.
Uh, thank you and uh, thank you, William for the great detailed presentation. Um, and you know, uh, as a member of GHGC, I'd certainly encourage any investment in the valley and economic development. So uh, kudos to all of your efforts and plans. Um, I had more of a tactical question though, uh, relating to the phase four type of development up at Glacier Creek and I mean, a, a couple of observations first, a lift is very expensive and I'm trying to wrap my head around understanding how starter home properties in that density can help finance the type of infrastructure that you're talking about. I mean, our roads are so expensive to build. Um, even just around South Townsite, just making it a hundred yards is one and a half million dollars. So uh, just sort of my, just sort of looking at it from the helicopter view of your plans, I'm trying to make that work. But my question is a tactical one, and that is when that land is disposed from municipal uh, land trust and it's put into your possession, how do you envision guaranteeing that type of starter home and starter property opportunity? Is that in uh, deed restrictions? Or is that in uh, some type of mandated plan? Or how, how, how do you envision that guarantee to back to the community um, of your phase four vision? Because of the e- extreme expense and infrastructure just to get out there.
Yeah, and um, I mean, just, uh, there's, I guess, a, a couple of things I can say about this. Uh, you know, it's not necessarily, uh, I mean, first off, it's, it's written in our uh, area master plan amendment. This is within that document. It identifies it. Uh, the municipality does not have to approve our development master plan is it, if it does not um, you know, coincide with what we had in our area master plan. And so if we are not building what was indicated in that, they uh, will not likely not approve a development master plan for development. Um, so that's one area. And second, you know, it's we could, for instance, make the workforce housing in phase one condos if we wanted to, but um, this is all something we have identified that we need. Um, we just, we don't have any uh, you know, outside desire to not follow through with what we've promised. Like this is, and we, we, you know, we put this in there like, um, I mean, there's, there is really no guarantee. Like there's no um, it, it could not get built. I mean, who knows? The, the economy could completely crash. We could have an O eight, the first phase can The first base cannot be built. Like there's a lot of, um, variability in this. Uh, but, I mean, those are our intentions. Um, it is within our master plan. Um, it's what we intend to do, but, um,
Can I?
Yeah, it's tough to answer. Do you wanna say something, Ella?
Look, you want.
Can I?
Sure.
Can I? Yeah, I just, it's, she speaks up to what Ella and when Lisa said, you, you've kind of gotta believe in it. You gotta believe in Pomeroy. I'm a contractor. I don't do things like this. I don't, um, I've never believed in a project like this and I think it's because I'm a very footy and, and um, I've met Pomeroy. I trust this client. I sit in brainstorming sessions with Brian Pomeroy, Skylab. There's no backdoor dealings. They're genuinely asking, what does this town need? What does this town want? And it's given me more passion for work than I've ever had. I live and breathe this project. So, um, there is no simple answer. Anything, everything could fall apart. There could be another pandemic. God knows what could happen, but you've gotta believe in it. And, uh, I'm telling you from my perspective, it's a hundred percent real. So I just want to add that.
And I guess just to hopefully speak to our reputation too, uh, you know, we've proposed two developments so far here and we've followed through on them. Um, so that being, um, the largest staff housing development in Girdwood and, um, maybe not the largest commercial development. No, uh, but a pretty awesome spa too. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, we have a few more questions and we're at the thirty minute mark right now. Larry in the room?
What I think the plan is missing is the inventory of impacts to the community. Uh, so irrespective of what the buildings look like or how they're laid out, what's important to understand is, you know, what's the impact to your sewer system? What's the impact to your water system? You know, all those infrastructural facilities and uh, previous master plans actually had schematic layouts for, you know, where, how sewer lines are gonna run and that's what they're, so we can kind of see, you know, and then also conversations with A W F Q, uh, the utility to understand that they have capacity and how will that impact the community? Uh, because those are, you know, public facilities that ultimately probably need some, you know, some uh, capital somewhere if significant amount of capacity is needed. Okay, now, uh, you know, the same is true with your road, uh, and your, uh, traffic study. The traffic study that you have here, I can say it's a joke. It basically says, um, we're not going to increase anything. So you hold one of those things, but it doesn't provide you. Oh, and it also takes away portion of the community that, uh, was part of the original. Granted, it's not owned by, but some of its development, so it's still the traffic. And there's gonna be traffic impact on them. Um, you know, that's also included all the way up. So understanding how, you know, traffic, which is a big impact to the community, you know, is going to be impacted by this is important so that other planning can be done and, and those things can be accommodated as you the, um, uh, the access, the access from Auburn over to the Glacier Creek Bridge connects to, um, to Crook and Grove. There's no conversation about that. And that's an important part of what might eventually happen out there. So is that gonna go at the end of, you know, the snake road out there? And if so, it should show that on the plan.
Well, we talked about that in the submission.
Okay, it said that it would be accommodated, but it doesn't show where it's been built.
Yeah, and we spoke with it, uh, with planning and zoning, um, and it was, you know, um, it'd be deemed as just restrictive to an overall project. It could cost thirty to forty million dollars, maybe more to build that bridge. Um, especially with where it's been placed.
I, I don't think, well, okay, you can say that the cost is a factor, but if you don't provide for a facility, you don't provide access across property, um, you know, and, and, and address it in the plan, then, uh, then it precludes it.
But if we do provide the right of way access for that bridge to build across there and our development in Glacier.
Isn't it the end of the road?
It could be, could be. But it could also be anywhere. Uh, I mean, the comp plan shows it much more south than that. Um, but yes, it does make it easier with more access roads out there. Um, and just to talk on the traffic report, um, you know, those numbers from the previous report were updated to today's numbers. Um, and I, I, I disagree with you. I think they did a good job with that report we went over thoroughly.
Did you know that it doesn't say anything, doesn't provide a number for the current motel? Provide a number in your, in your, you know, doesn't provide a number for the ski areas. It doesn't provide a number for the day track use in the summertime for the, none of that is, you know, it's all just added as existing, but it doesn't count a number in trips.
Do you have it handy with you?
Hmm.
Do you have the traffic report?
It is in your planner.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm just saying that, that a lot of that, that as far as telling the community.
It doesn't count.
How is your overall infrastructure impact going to be as well as to our, our, and things like that as well? I think all of those things are important items that you would expect to see in an area master. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Uh, online, Grace? Still there? Uh, Grace, if you're not ready yet, uh, Brooks had his hand up. Brooks, are you available?
I'm available now. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I just wanna be, is this, uh, is this an appropriate time for comments or was it just for questions?
It was both Brooks and Grace, uh, said she's ready and her hand was up first. So Grace, go for it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'll take my hand down as well. Sorry. Um, I have like four kind of overriding, um, questions and, and kind of comments regarding your proposal. Um, in the first question, um, and kind of a, it's kind of asking you, um, you're stating that you're going to provide housing for locals, uh, whether it be the workforce housing or whether it's going to be in your fourth phase. Um, and how are you proposing to do that? Uh, because U S, um, housing and urban development standards are very explicit on exclusion. And, um, there has, is, is, and I've been a developer for almost twenty-five years. I have yet to find how one can get around the current law, the federal law, the U S federal law that allows for open to the public if housing is out there. So what are you proposing in language that can guarantee our community that the locals of Girdwood would get your property? Um, that would be the first one. On the second issue, um, you decide, you have defined or you're stating attainable housing. And I would like, if you could give us a definition of what your, what your definition is of attainable housing, um, I would really appreciate it because it's, uh, knowing what our current market rate housing is, both for, uh, permanent ownership as well as rental. Um, it seems to be contrary to what I think you're talking about, but I would like to have a definition from you and uh, if you have a definition, if you could provide that to us tonight, that would be really grateful.
And Grace, if I may, could we compartmentalize that so Willem could answer those two first?
Okay, yes, let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, uh, sorry, could you repeat the first question?
Um, my first question deals with the U S HUD standards for, um, housing. And you've made indications that you are going to have exclusivity or you're going to allow for Girdwood to have a priority interest or priority position in housing. How are you provoking, providing that in your language?
Yeah, um, I mean, we don't have a specific definition for it, which I guess kind of will answer your second question too, uh, because it's so far off, seven years off. Uh, we have a lot of time to plan it. We're still studying other municipalities' models where they have done this before, uh, whether it be through a lottery system for locals. Um, so, yeah, we have our work cut out for us in figuring this out, but we, uh, do have, uh, a long time to plan it. Um, so I don't have a definition for that now and I, I don't have an answer for that.
All right. Thank you. Um, then on the next two issues, um, we've had somebody's talk here, uh, about uh, the comments that were made last week at L U C and the vote that was taken, um, supporting your development in tract A and B, but not supporting your development in the latter phase of Glacier Creek. Um, when you are proposing adding twenty-five percent more acreage, because currently, as I understand it, you have a little under four hundred acres in your current uh, master plan and you're proposing almost a hundred new acres in your master plan of public land that you're asking for our community to give you. Um, how does this translate with respect to trust in our community? Because as I have lived in Girdwood for many, many years, um, you are saying to me right now, um, you're proposing doing some good things with Little Bears. What other organizations in Girdwood have you reached out and are supporting at this present time? That would be one question. And then the last question is, have you thought about doing a community impact analysis? That would give our community a fairly definitive result of what it is you're proposing in this amended master plan. Thank you.
Um, other groups I've, we've worked with, uh, like, did like donate to support it or just like who I've reached out to within this project to work with?
Well, I'm sorry, your website says that you support multi nonprofits in the communities that you work in. And other than Little Bears, I would like to know the names of the community nonprofits that you have given to.
I mean, I know we just, uh, through the, through the, uh, slush cup, all of our, uh, portions of all drink and sales went to the Girdwood Food Bank, I believe. Um, I don't manage our community, uh, I guess donations, so I don't know all of them, but, um, I could get you a list of them. I know there are several there. I know a lot of our events have beneficiaries. Um, but, um, I don't have a, a list off the top in my head that I know. I don't manage that for us.
Thank you, Willem. And the other, the other question sounded like what Larry already asked, but maybe I'm sorry for that.
Analysis. I don't, I don't have a community benefit analysis. Uh, again, I mean, what we did throughout this whole process, um, you know, and we were, I wouldn't call it lucky, but there was another development happening while we were in the planning process for this, uh, which you all know, uh, which project that is, where we were able to listen to all of the community's feedback for that on what you needed as well as other projects throughout this whole time. Uh, we also spent a lot of time meeting with individuals, um, in the community, meeting with groups, meeting with, uh, there's a lot of groups in Girdwood for, you know, how small, um, town it is. A lot of clubs, associations, uh, and they've all been really great to be with. Um, and everyone had like great feedback. Some people were extremely candid. Um, but, you know, it, everything here like a hundred and eighty units proposed of workforce housing, community center, uh, ice rink, which is like, I mean, that'll be amazing here. Uh, Little Bears, new commercial spaces, uh, which will, I mean, hopefully, I can't say for sure grocery store, hardware store, um, which are needed here. Um, and we're pretty close to now, um, just new shops, new restaurants. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't have an analysis done. I don't know the specific uh, or specifications of completing that analysis, but, um, this development is so community oriented. I have worked for several other development companies. I've never in my life seen, uh, a development that impacted community so positively.
Thank you. We'll move to the next one. Brooks, comments are totally acceptable.
Uh, thank you, Brianna. Um, I was, uh, I listened at the L U C, but I did not have the stamina needed to hang around for the vote. So, um, this is kind of a first time comment for me. Um, but I, I was listening to people that were, uh, concerned about the, um, Glacier Creek Village component of the plan. And I'm not, um, you know, advocating that the board vary from the outcome of L U C. Although I probably would have voted differently myself, I view the, um, master plan as a whole that that where all the parts have to fit together. And, um, I think I would echo the comments that, uh, of Ms. Miles, it's that, that it's sort of easy to discount the benefit to the community of additional units of workforce housing. Um, when, um, you already have a home. And it's easy to discount the value to the community of, um, a fairly permanent, um, improvement to the availability of childcare if you don't have any kids that are preschool age or going to be, you know, if your kids are all left home. But those, uh, components of this master plan have, in my view, you know, significant value, uh, and they're, none of them are easy to pull off. The, um, the, uh, the restrictions on housing will definitely be a challenge. The economics will be a challenge, even, um, raising the money to construct the childcare center is all gonna be, there are gonna be challenges to different components of the community. But as a whole, I just, I would like to say to, uh, Pomeroy, uh, two things, you know, one positive and one negative. Positively, I just, I have a tremendous appreciation for the, um, sensitivity to the concerns that were expressed about the availability of housing, uh, the importance of workforce housing, um, and the importance of trying to, uh, generate housing that is designed to, um, serve the needs of people that live and work here in Girdwood. That's not to say it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be able to be pulled off and, um, but I really appreciate the fact that this plan, um, unlike the Hilton Hills development, at least is starting with some appreciation for what we need here in Girdwood. And I'm sure there are business purposes for the resort that line. I mean, they, they need housing for their employees. They need, they, they want to attract and retain, uh, employees at all levels of their operation and this will, will help do that. But there really are some things in here that are, uh, tremendous value, uh, value to the community. And there is a sacrifice, uh, I guess of sorts in the, you know, overall quality of recreation experience if in fact this, um, Glacier Creek Village is fully built out because instead of skiing, um, alongside, you know, woods that don't have buildings on them, you might be skiing and somebody's back, you know, just right next door to people's backyards and looking at houses, but you still will have some opportunities to ski in the, in the same general area that we do today. So, um, that's the gist of my comments. I, I would, I would kind of suspect the board is gonna just approve this resolution that's in, in front of them and I don't, and I, I don't have any real problems with the board doing that because it does accurately reflect the outcome of the L U C, but I do think as we go forward through the process, it does bear some additional reflection on, you know, the overall negative components and positive components of this that everyone can put on their own scale to see where they come out. But there's a, there's an awful lot of positive, uh, with the proposed change to the master plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Brooks. Uh, to the board, I'd entertain a motion because this item has taken over an hour.
Yep.
Need to extend, to extend this discussion for like twenty minutes.
Second?
Also, yeah.
Any objections? Okay, item continues.
I guess I'm not quite ready to.
Well, you can, you can have a turn or?
I have to get the problem in first and then when we go to. You know, I, I've been on board a few year, you know, three years now and, um, I've seen several, uh, workforce housing ideas come up and I've seen every one of them shot down. And it's because, and if, you know, if I was where somebody was and didn't like it, I may not want it there too, but I, I think we, we all want workforce. I think we, we all want workforce housing, but we don't want it there, and we hear that a lot. And you know, there's a development in my neighborhood. It was owned by a group that was in this room talking to us. They got enough negative feedback on it that somebody else took it and just didn't really ask any of those questions. And Holton Hills is similar. They weren't talking to us at the beginning, and they're probably really not going to talk to us now. Or it's going to be more difficult to wedge workforce housing in there, I think. And so there are, you know, it, it does come at a cost, and at some point we're going to have to, if we truly want workforce housing, some, something's going to have to give. And we're sitting there watching somebody, watching them bring, ask the community what they want, and they, and they have a plan to deliver. So that's just my, that's my.
I just had kind of, just for the sake of information, and also because of a little concern about the tone, some of the feedback has taken. Just for the record, the LUC vote was twenty-two to two for this and twenty-two to one for counting the, the overall resolution in support of some of the developments and opposing the the development, particularly just in Glacier Creek. But other than that, there was almost unanimous support for the other development. Also, I was correctly pointing out during that conversation, a couple of things that I think are plenty of background information that the Gird comprehensive plan, according to our HLVAC representative, over ninety comments about development, opposing development in the Glacier Creek area. So I think categorizing that as all self-entitled homeowners is really dangerous, really dangerous territory, and I think that that's unfair to the community members who have spent time. And in this case, I wanted to remind you guys that the, the, it actually goes back even farther than that, because the comprehensive plan is based on the Trails Plan, and that has been in works for decades, really. Deb Atsack, I heard a great history of this at the HLVAC meeting, in which they were talking about this particular section of land, and Girdwood Trails is, the Trails Plan has been working on this for a very long time. And yes, granted, the land was, you know, maybe not totally decided on, but it, it is something that the community has been working on for decades. This vote at the Land Use Committee was not a one night. It was two decades worth of votes, at least. And I think it's important to view it in that regard and to not mischaracterize the absolutely scattered thousands of hours that have gone into Girdwood plan in this area. So we're going to treat that with respect and not denigration. I want to be clear on that. That's why I want to say.
Mike, please.
I was actually.
Oh, Jerry's.
Speak with Jerry.
Jerry's hand was up right before.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was just going to say that I kind of agree with Brooks. You know, the community has to decide what we're going to do about housing and, and like, Guy also stated, you know, everybody wants housing, but every time a housing project comes up, we don't want it there. And so, you know, maybe over time, there's some compromise where the Pomeroy could get with the Trails Committee. I've seen trails go through residential areas that really look nice. And if you look at that map where the trail goes now, it looks like that trail, like, where you're going through the Enchanted Forest is pretty well still not housed or right around there. You know, there's, if you go back into the woods from there, you, you, there would be housing to the, I guess, northwest. But anyways, I just think, you know, at some point, the community has to decide, you know, what we're going to do about housing, and we, we can't just keep saying we don't want housing. And so maybe in the future, there would be some way that the Trails Committee and the community can get with Pomeroy and maybe work out some sort of compromise on that last phase. And the, and that last phase, you know, like, nobody knows what will ever happen. They don't know the economics, and it's how many years away? Five, six, seven years away? So anyways, that's just my comment. I'm not asking the board to not vote with the LUC. I will say one thing about the LUC vote. There was never an opportunity to vote for the whole plan as it was originally. You know, I would have voted for the plan as it was originally, but, you know, there was the amendment made, and once the amendment made was made, then you either had to vote yes or no. So I would have voted for the plan. It was, it was, you know, originally, and probably got tarred and feathered by my friends and neighbors. But anyways, thanks for listening to my comment.
Thank you, Jerry. Mike?
Yeah. Many comments, but I'll try and keep it fairly short. At the beginning of the presentation, you showed the two thousand and seven area master plan. And what's kind of interesting when you look at that is how little of it actually happened. So I'm trying not to be cynical, but I'm trying to be realistic, and I think realistically, this is a set of hopes and desires, which may or may not. I think phase one will happen. Phase two will probably happen. Phase three is a little bit less certain. Phase four is even less certain. If far in the future, a lot can change. So I think there's a, there's a danger in making your whole decision dependent on what may or may not happen seven years from now. And that's the danger, I think, in both directions, of assuming that this plan, just by stating the intent of doing it, this is going to solve your personal housing problems. And also, I think it's dangerous to look at that plan, look at the proposal for phase four, and decide that's what it's going to look like. So many things rejected between that and including there will actually need to be a developed master plan in time, and it will have to be consistent with our other plans at the time. I hear a lot of cynicism and praise for, for Pomeroy. I think you can, you can just treat them as an organization. They have needs, and many of their needs are the same as the community needs. You know, they, they also have the housing and staff. So you can, you know, you can take a cynical view, or you can take just a very pragmatic view. There are lots of ways in which we have a light. So I don't think there's any need to see them as good or bad. It just is. Willam is, of course, wonderful. I mean, as a, as an organization, you don't need to go from good or, you don't need to see them as a positive, negative. They just have, they have requirements as well. I did hear a comment about land for Little Bears taking land and having land. I just wanted some clarification on that. I think that's a long-term lease, isn't it?
I use for a dog.
Yeah, 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 right. And so the recreation center. So it's, it's use of the land. And there's, I was really interested in Larry's comment about some of the, some of the technical deficiencies, potential technical deficiencies. I had some of the same questions. And unfortunately, there isn't a staff packet. Yes, there isn't an analysis for planning to point out there are things missing. I trust their judgment, bro. So I wish we could, you know, we could wait until we had the staff packet before we sort of make more detailed comments, and maybe still have opportunity. I don't think so. Definitely when it comes to the meeting, planning and zoning, the staff packet would be available. I intend to speak in that and address any opposed. And finally, I think the, in terms of long-term plan for the community, I, I sort of, I think it's understandable why there's going to be a lot of commercial development at the very end of the community. You know, we become kind of like a ribbon development, which is generally a poor, poor approach of planning. But at the same time, that's the land that the resort has, and the resort has resources to do something. I think one of the messages I'm getting from this is one of its failures of the municipality and HLV in particular, of why, you know, we have land here, sitting in front of us, that could have done a lot of the needs for childcare, probably for recreation center, housing, et cetera. And it has not worked. A lot of the reason it hasn't worked is because of municipal processes and and the approach to HLV hasn't advanced taken to them. So I think that's kind of more of a statement to failures elsewhere than it is elsewhere. Anyway, in this period of security party for suggesting a change to the, suggesting the amendment to the post of the plan use. So to be fair, I'm doing both sides. What we have in front of us is consistent land use. What I'm going to propose is an amendment to basically back out the objection to Glacier Creek Village, and I think from a technical view. Actually, I'm going to do us two amendments. Can I do a simple, I'm going to do a simple amendment first. Okay. There's one, there's one mistake, though, which is probably more of a mistake. One mistake, I noticed, whereas at the very top, the phrase track B shouldn't be there. So can I just propose an amendment to remove the, which track B? Do we have a motion? I guess so. Give me a motion.
Make that one size bigger, too.
I got a reading on it.
Can you speak up, please?
So sorry, just to be clear. The word track B at the top there is incorrect. It's not track B at all. It's track, I think.
I, I agree.
Calm extension.
Or you see it called.
We can just cut out those two words. That doesn't change the meaning. That's just a technical correction. So.
Okay. And did you have a second?
I do have a little.
Oh, second. Okay.
Wondering if we can just deal with that.
I think that's just.
Is it clear?
May I jump to Larry real quick in the room in case it has any merit to this? Larry?
So by way of just a little bit of history, when Sabre originally purchased this way, and finally, HLV, just like is being discussed now, there were four leading partners out there. C and D were the ones that we went by on the way to the hotel. There were a lot of people that thought that might be speculation, you know, that Sabre was going to buy that, one bad land just on speculation. What would prevent them from just sitting on it and developing it first? Because it was closest to existing sort of. So if we didn't build a two-hundred-room motel within, I don't remember the exact timeframe, but it wasn't a particularly long timeframe. That land, even though paid for, would have gone back to the municipality. And that was in the contract. So other people have looked at developers or proposals, you know, as potentially speculative. And they've come up with other ways to essentially say, well, you know, here's, you know, you don't do it. It goes check. And I think there's, you know, what used to be good, still.
Thank you. Willam?
Yeah, and just to kind of speak on Mike's point there for many points, but the, I mean, you can, you can doubt some places that we're going to build. You can take the cynical route to it, but we have, you know, we've proposed a commercial product, project. We've built it. It's been successful. We've done seventy-one units of housing. We've built that. And we've looked at, or we've spent money on the mountain so far, and yes, there's going to be more to come to that. So far, we've spent over fifty million dollars improving the hotel. And, you know, we have long-term plans to keep spending, to keep doing these projects. We've had so many studies done. We've spent a lot of money on this project already. And we did have a, a private housing study done for this. There are a lot of people that want to live here, who don't have homes here, like more than can be provided currently. Like, there are so many people who want to live here, but yeah, you can't buy a lot. You can't buy a house. So just, like, give people a future place to live.
Okay, we have five more minutes in our extension. So the motion was to change.
Just take out the phrase track B.
Take out the phrase track B. Could we go by assent on that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no oppositions, that amendment is passed.
Right, my second amendment was to vote, so basically to disagree with that news and to remove the exception, exception to the Glacier Creek, which I think the way we do that practically is to remove on this page, remove the second where that's completed. So, and then in the second, therefore, we strike colon, but it does not support Glacier Creek development, future, et cetera. Sorry, can we keep the words Glacier Creek Village as in the list of development, but then take on eventual treaty. So effectively, the last, therefore, it's also therefore supervised for self-support application. Aliaska, so Terry last one. Aliaska development, which is known as Glacier Creek. Actively, reactively, our choice of which, which one choose.
Guy seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, this is going to be interesting.
I have thought that I can be recognized. This is Brianna. I'm having challenges with this, and I feel like we honor all of the comments that, because we're paying attention to the comprehensive plan and the last land use meeting, the request to have that land be for trails only. But I feel like this might, if it happens, if it even happens, this is something that the, the organization is doing. It's part of their process. They have to amend their development plan. And years before, when other owners owned Aliaska, two or three times, had to amend their plans and maybe didn't have to go through this big involved process with lots of community present. And this one gets to be really under the, under the everyone's scrupulous eyes. And I've been at meetings where people were told by experienced realtors, someday this area will be houses. And everyone in the room said, we don't want any trails there. No trails. And then now we have option for trails because it's in the Trails Plan, and maybe housing, or maybe open space in the comprehensive plan. But I just would want it worked out with people that have the, the abilities and professionalism to work it out, and not my vote today that might not matter if, if it happens or not.
So, Joe.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have two more minutes for this. We can vote. I'll vote on the latest amendment, which is to remove the, but does not support. Right?
To re, not confirm this. To clarify, the, the amendment was to remove the, the second, whereas this page completely I meant to rewrite the last. So therefore, to, to show support for the three components. Aliaska development, which is not exactly.
Okay. And we have one more minute. We also had a hand up, and I did let another member of the public speak twice. Grace, do you have something?
Actually, can, before we do that, can I add five minutes then to this item?
Second for five minutes? Second? And objection. Okay. Grace?
Thank you. I am, if you could please restate what it is that you're proposing again. Are you supporting the LUC action? And if not, are you planning on making comments back to LUC so they can reconsider? Or what is it exactly the GBOS is doing? And on, on the second point that I'd have is, you know, I, I find, you know, in two thousand and twenty-four today, the average cost to build in Girdwood is four hundred dollars a square foot. I mean, that is what is the reality in Girdwood. And any conversation with respect to affordable, workforce, attainable, all of these very current, let's say, vernaculars for the word of, we would like to help people get into housing, is a bit difficult, given the fact that we don't have any government subsidies. That is the only way these properties are developed in the country. And I know that in Girdwood, unless we were individually as homeowners, property owners, willing to tax ourselves to help this segment of our community to get into housing, we don't have that ability because we're a part of the municipality. So, I mean, in the word of, you know, what it is cost today, if the person that was talking about having an affordable house, I mean, today's affordable house, the average sales price in Girdwood today is eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is the average sales price in Girdwood. And I think we should, you know, we get a weekly or monthly or maybe quarterly newsletter from our friend Sam Daniels, and he's been very explicit of what's happening in our market. I, I find that, you know, if you talk about something in the three hundred to four hundred thousand range, we're talking about homes that are seven hundred and fifty square feet to a thousand square feet. So I, I think that it, you know, we need to be realistic of what our community can afford and what the reality of the market is. Thank you.
Tiny homes.
People want homes that small.
I want to tell you, we need to talk this through. There are inevitably. I want to take, uh, we need to talk this through. Um, there are inevitably more hands.
I'm, I'm gonna, uh, just, uh, we can go straight to the votes.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. There are no other comments from the board? Amendment?
Okay, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
So can I just check, is this to move to a vote or is this on the amendment itself?
Right.
So it was the amendment, uh, I thought it's the amendment.
First amendment, right?
If everyone is, I guess if you're the chair, if everyone is conceding to the vote, you should do so.
Just quick questions on, I need to clarify. Yeah, that's all.
Uh, sorry, I took a question right after I tried to clarify. This next amendment that was motioned and seconded is to remove, but does not support. Basically, right, Mike?
The purpose of this amendment is to approve, is to support the area master plan in completely, as opposed to the land use. Land use did not support the phase form. This amendment, if it passes, will be supporting for this.
Okay, so a yes vote supports all.
Correct.
Thank you.
And?
Assuming the second vote passes.
Right, the main motion, that's still, still.
And, and then, and then no vote supports the document is written?
The original, yes, the document, no, same language.
Yeah. Good amendment time. Okay, Kyle, repeat.
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Uh, Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, now we'll go to the main motion, right? And that is document, um, with the amendments that passed.
Okay. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
No.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
You're every.
Let me tell you, we have some work to do too. So we'll be different.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we have a request for a bathroom break, 9:13, 18. I would ask for a recess until 9:18.
Do we have?
Oh, you still have the.
Yeah, we've got, got eleven.
Definitely.
Yep.
I don't know. See, we will like to talk about Forest Fair.
But I also, just a quick, uh, process question. So this now goes free.
If you're on the record, we need to, hey, people in the room, back, Larry, return the meeting. So if you guys want to talk, then go back out.
I'm sorry, I just, I had, uh, just a question about, uh, I think we're under the rules and regulations. I think we're under the, um, a time thing, so this goes as we just passed it, sorry. Item 10, our agenda item goes as we just passed it. It does not go back to L U C because of the, and, and I understand that correctly?
Um, the, my understanding is we have a choice of either holding a joint meeting between now and, um, June the 3rd.
June 3rd?
Yeah, which is when this comes in front of planning. So.
Okay.
So we could hold a meeting between now and then, or we have said to recommend.
So.
We don't have time to go through another full cycle.
Okay, thank you. So that, um, and sorry, I don't want to take over, but I think we do have to talk about this on one second. That means that if we were going to do a joint meeting, we should make that decision first before we move on to number 11. Is that correct? Hmm.
Unless we want to.
I, I thought they were quite related, but maybe they'd be at the same meeting. I, I don't know. But it's a valid question to follow up number 10 with, and we could
Revisit it.
Take a, we could ask each other right now if we'd rather have a joint meeting instead of, um, that, that seems like the rational approach for a time-sensitive item. To me.
We have done this before, uh, where we've had, it's not been one or two days, it's been a few weeks.
Hmm.
So we did this for a while. So, yeah, I'd recommend, you know, you see, schedule, see as possible to schedule a joint meeting.
For L U C?
Without receiving.
Realizing that there's a holiday weekend between here and there.
Yes, so next Monday.
June 3rd, before June 3rd.
Yeah, I guess there, there's two things there. If we can't get a joint meeting together, then the board needs to be prepared to submit a letter that explains both decisions.
We'll do that as chess.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm willing to make one of those things happen. Thank you, Jennifer. So then we'll go to number 11, and, uh, Willam, would you like to just introduce 11?
Sure. Would you like me to share screens on it again?
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Sorry, I accidentally blocked out the, uh, meeting.
Would anyone like to speak to number 11 while he's rejoining?
Uh, I can, I can speak to it. Um, this is, uh, for revisions to the commercial track plot associated with track A and track B. So essentially, we're taking the, um, commercial frag lots and, um, reforming them to fit our development for financing purposes. Uh, so this is a pretty administrative, uh, process and doesn't, um, necessarily have a massive impact. Uh, it's only for track A and track B.
Any questions before this screen sharing? Brian?
So thank you. Uh, I was at the L U C meeting discussing item number 11, and, um, this, this agenda item passed unanimously from Land Use Committee with, with no objections whatsoever. Made perfect sense to all as attendance to approve the requests for Palmeroy. This, uh, item.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments from the board at the moment? I'll go to Crystal online.
Um, I just wanted to speak, um, because it got brought up a couple times about the Little Bears. Um, on this new frag lot plan, we would be frag lot six. And so even though we are, have a long-term lease, um, our boundaries are very clearly defined. And again, that was a 99-year lease for a dollar a year, which is essentially a donation from, um, Palmeroy. And we did have a, an, a commercial broker opinion of value, um, do, uh, an analysis of the site, and they said on the low end, it's worth 871,000, and on the high end, a million 45,000. So that, um, is a huge boost, uh, to bringing the, the childcare center, um, to have a home. So just wanted to say that. That's, um, I definitely support the, um, reconfiguration of the frag lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Mike?
No, just asking clarification question, uh, Crystal. That's okay. Um, I know you said this at land use as well. Is that the value of the lease? Or is that the value if you own the land?
We, we requested, uh, fee simple, um, like, so if, if the land were to be sold, what, what, what would the market value of that one acre parcel be? And that was the valuation that the, um, Jack White Commercial Broker came up with.
That's not the value of the, that's not the value of the lease sets offered. That's the value if the land is giving us you how much you can sell that. Thank you.
So that is what the, uh, frag lots currently look like. This is track B. On this side, and this is track A. And what we are proposing looks like this, but more complicated, um, just to follow footprints of buildings for financing purposes. That is it. So we are looking for a resolution of support, uh, for this.
Okay, thanks for pulling it up. Fair reality. Uh, Brooks, did you have a question or comment? I saw his hand. Any other comments from the board meanwhile? Grace, quickly?
Um, yes, I just want to make sure I heard this correctly. Um, the Little Bears lot has been, um, given a value of somewhere between eight and a million, over a million dollars. And that is a broker opinion of value, not an appraisal. Is that correct?
That's correct. If we, um, if and when, uh, Little Bears needs, um, to get a loan for any balance remaining, we would need a formal appraisal, but at this time, we just got a broker opinion of value.
Or motion from the board?
Yeah, does that mean, was it draw, uh, resolution?
Oh, we're getting there.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
First one.
And then 11?
The one above that.
Can I, uh, make one suggestion? I'm not sure that the very bottom end here has a vote. I don't think that's the correct one. So I just wanted to, uh, actively corrected by star.
Oh, look.
Last whereas, I don't think that's the correct one.
Twenty-six.
I don't think it was twenty-six, well, it was definitely about twenty-two nils, twenty-two zeros.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, is, could do that as a formal or a clerical? I think I, in the minutes, it was twenty-two or something.
Yeah. Kind of clerical. Doesn't change the status.
Okay, and Kyle, I think Guy might ask to enlarge the text. It is.
I can't handle this.
None, it's not red line.
You know, next to hearing aids, we're so charmed, Chris.
All right, the fragment lot vote was twenty-six in favor, one opposed, and five sustaining.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one opposed was not possible to reconfirm. It seemed weird.
It, I remember that.
In that case, perhaps the state was in the previous one. Go back, we just fixed that.
The one ahead was twenty-two in favor, one opposed, and a heated standing.
Should fix the breach.
Good. I haven't looked at this still, but I'm trying to support, uh, members are willing to move or retain motion to move.
Yeah, I'll move this.
Awesome. Seconds? Else any other discussion? I'll do, ask for a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for that extra entertainment too. For 11. Okay, number 12, Girdwood Forest Fair request for G B O S letter of non-injection for the 2024 Forest Fair in the package, and, um, Karen Secaro's been here. Anytime, your face?
I'll talk about this, then Karen gets unmuted, but, um, uh, we are working through the permitting, and, uh, I know Karen's been working hard to submit her, uh, permits, and now we're just waiting on those permits to get filed and approved, so. Um, so we're getting closer with each round, uh, as we go forward. So, um, at this point in time, we are, uh, tonight probably not seeking a letter of, of non-injection, um, as we want to make sure everything gets approved, um, especially from the fire aspect of things. So, so we should probably, uh, be able to seek that, uh, right before the fair.
Okay, so have this kind of.
Actually.
Karen, your.
Yeah, could I speak to that? I mean, and, and I understand where Kyle's coming from. That is typically, um, how it works, but it also, it's all chicken and egg. And so what I was honestly hoping for tonight is, I think even in the way it's written, is that it's not actually effective until all the permits are in. And so I was hoping for that letter of non-injection that's kind of speaks to our fee waiver and the fact that there are no objections to the, um, the general site plan as it is, or our plans to move forward. It assists with the rest of our permitting to have that letter in hand. So I don't know. Kyle, do you want to?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, I just had one quick comment or question on the letter. Does it need to say 2023 where it says as present? Okay.
It should say 2024, and you should have from a couple months back, the 2024. It should say 2024, and you should have from a couple of months back, the 2024 site plan update. And I have um shared with Kyle and Margaret and also Chief Weston our updated map. And I'll just give you the brief overview. Basically, um just a couple of small changes. We are adding some more real food booths over near the skate park to try to um disperse the food and give me people more real food options, not just dessert options. So that we can keep our fair people happy and not have any area super congested. So with that, we'll get another bigger dumpster that goes out where the um, near the kids park, that area. We had a smaller dumpster last year. We'll get a bigger one there because our earth maintenance folks rightly mentioned that, hey, we might have more garbage going on that side. So we want that. Um, and then otherwise, most of the rest of things, we got some good feedback. And we're working uh from last year, just like disperse the porta-potties a little bit more in the campground. And we're working with Chief Weston for some just emergency procedures uh for different uh emergency situations.
Thank you. I think we do have that in the packet, well, the revised map and here on the screen.
You can see the new food booth should be on the backside of the skate park here.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
And if you jump up one page.
Is the.
Is the letter of non-injection.
Where it says site plan as presented.
It's 2023.
Okay.
I guess we're in 2024.
Uh, we have one question online. Brett?
Uh, for Brett?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, okay, thank you for that. So, you know, I've always kind of wanted to ask this question. I know that Forest Fair generates quite a bit of revenue. They give back in scholarships and at their discretion. And uh I've seen that over the years, but my question is that since there is all of that revenue, why is there a fee waiver? It just seems that it would be equitable if the fees were paid by all. I'm not sure that I understand how that goes. And so this would be a great time to try to explain that. Thank you.
I'll go first and then, and then Kyle, if someone else could follow up after. So the reason we asked for the fee waiver um so many years ago is because the Girdwood Forest Fair is actually the developer of the park. And we take care of the park every year by cleaning it up before the park happens and then after the park. And we also consider ourselves basically keepers of the forest in making improvements and supporting the community through the development of the park. And then in addition to that, um as you said, um we, we are a nonprofit and we turn back our profits into our community. And we have done so for as long as I know. Um, so we give more than fifty thousand dollars back to the community, to all the various nonprofits through a bunch of different programs. Last year, we had a really good year. I can't say that that happens every year, but it did last year. And we had something close the year before. And so the Girdwood Forest Fair really feels strongly that because they've had this history of being kind of keepers and establishment of the Girdwood Forest Fair and the Girdwood Forest Fair Park, that we would like to retain our, the income from that to keep doing what we do. And so while we recognize, you know, over the years that the park, uh Parks and Rec has, has had fees applied to entities that use the park. We frankly think we're special and we think that we give back uh quite a great deal to the community and uh we should be exempted from those fees.
Uh, thank you. Can I please ask a follow-up question to that? I, I certainly appreciate your response. And and just to put it into context, what were the gross uh revenues or ticket receipts from Forest Fair last year with fifty thousand dollars back to the community?
I don't know what the gross is. It's like I, we think we do submit our profit loss to the, of the GBOS, but I don't think that's public information. I'd have to check with the people that do the Bean County. And I don't know that number, actually.
Right, I guess that that would be a critical piece of information to try to contextualize the give back to the community because you think that you're privileged to access. So um I think that's an important part of the puzzle, just to understand uh that impact and why the waiver should be let. So wh- are you planning on providing that information back in order to encourage this waiver of fees?
It, it is part of our pro, our, it is part of our packet, is the profit loss statement to the board. And I did not believe that the board makes that public, but um.
Right, so that it's critical that the public have the information in order to ascertain whether or not the public fees should be waived. So thank you for your, uh, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Okay, Mike?
Um, it's a question for, like, the la- the last sentence of this matter says, uh, Girdwood Forest Fair will collect alcohol tax, remit, uh, remit funds to the municipality back reach directly. I was under the impression it's no longer required. See?
I believe you are correct. Um, I need to verify that one, but um I think you're correct that the alcohol tax is no longer. Directed at the nonprofits.
It's a change made late, late last year, I think, or late last year. Depending on the exact way you're using the license, but I think typically it would be uh required to remit.
Okay, well, I think if the intent for tonight is to pass this and it will be held until full permitting is complete, and then that last sentence may or may not be needed, uh, does the board feel comfortable voting on this? So, yeah.
Yeah, I'll move the, I'll move the letter.
Okay, we have a motion.
Corrective if necessary.
With, with sentence corrected if necessary, seconded by Brian. Uh, any other discussion?
I did one quick thing. We voted a couple of years ago to uh apply a multi-year fee waiver. Um, and I think it was three years. I think this is year two. If I remember correctly, I had good mind change.
Uh, I don't think there was an expiration to that resolution.
Oh, wasn't there? I think we did it. I remember, I remember discussing it.
I mean, I could look for it, but I don't ever remember there being an expiration to it.
It wasn't originally, I think, discussed, but it should be.
Yeah, okay. No, I mean, those fees have been waived for fifteen-plus years.
Since 2016.
Well, the fees are waived, the resolution. Yes, the resolution was written in 2016, but the fees have been waived since well before I was here. That was what I inherited.
Okay. Uh, and thank you very much, Karen, for coming tonight and having this, all of your work on this. I would ask for unanimous support. Are there any oppositions? Being none, uh, the mo- letter of non-injection is passed unanimously, and thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Karen. Number thirteen, parliamentary procedure training by the Alaska Municipal League.
Yeah, so this will be quick, I think. You never know. So as, uh, we've already talked about this, I've been working on this with the Alaska Municipal League. I brought back the board's uh recommendation to the municipal league that we were, if, unless I hopefully got it correct, that we were in particular interested in the decorum debate, parliamentary procedures, uh, voting, particularly uh the votes to reconsider and tips for a successful meeting. So that was the selection out of the other things, which included things like Open Meetings Act and whatnot that we've already been trained on exactly. So we, yeah, we didn't, anyway, so we already talked about this. What I don't have is a piece of paper from them, yet they were wanting to schedule first, and I said, I don't know, that might be, that's a chicken and egg thing as well. So we're uh, they're working on scheduling. I explained we hadn't officially voted on this yet. So I don't know if we want to uh do that now or wait until we have their official written proposal. They are still estimating uh. Uh, well, NE six hundred, they're saying possibly five, but if we did, uh, NT six hundred would be good. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, I have a quick question. Do they limit these two, three or four or not? Same price, same two hours?
They, well, uh, actually, so their usual training is a weekend, a full weekend. And so they said, uh, first of all, that they could shorten it because we're all experienced and already acting uh on the boards or boards of various kinds. These, this training was originally designed for rank beginners, but yeah, it's a two-day training. So, no, they didn't limit me in the number ones we could pick, but they are used to having much longer.
Okay. Thank you. I think that might help with if we move to support it, we know that we could still have the ones we suggested be addressed with this to exceed.
Right.
Any questions from other board members?
Your pretty share is not going to go five hundred, but again.
I'm asking for six hundred.
First, this is big.
Yeah, well, if, um, any changes, I'll bring it back to the board. But yes, that's, that's the, their best, uh, their best guess. This is uh similar to the four acre training situation. They're designing something for us. So this is a unique situation, but as I mentioned in the four acre summary, I was really surprised at the way in which this met community needs uh like from Anchorage that hadn't been addressed just because uh other organizations limit their trainings to just themselves. So uh Anchorage, uh, the municipal league is kind of excited about doing something that's open for the general folks.
Anyone want to move this item? It's the will of body for this. It's placeholder. We'll just keep talking about it next month.
I'll make a motion that we um. We put aside not to exceed six hundred dollars for the parliamentary procedure training by the Alaska Municipal League. And do we need to stay with that control?
Oh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? And uh, I'll ask for any oppositions. Go by a cent. Okay. Motion passes and we'll hear back from Anchorage Municipal League. And dates.
Yes.
Great. Number fourteen, GBSA housing goals, and that's following our joint meeting with GHCC last week regarding STRs and ADUs.
So coming from that meeting, we uh improved and set up the first six housing goals. We start with, and the next thing is to add strategies, um, but we at least have a start on this process. Regarding STRs and ADUs, we didn't have any uh decisions made of just strategies. And uh, we decided, perhaps too strong a word, but we uh, I believe the sense of the meeting was, uh, there's a couple of ways to go about this. And I don't think we established a clear path to doing so. Um, so we can do that now. Um, so next one.
Other thoughts?
I have a question, I guess. Uh, did I do that meeting? We, we had chosen six goals?
Yes. Yeah, they were, yeah, I think actually on the.
There are minutes from the meeting. So I think that's probably in your minutes pack.
We can turn that into a, to your document.
So to clarify what I think Mike was saying, we can go from there with strategies or talk about it next month with our ideas as homework or strategies for those six goals.
Sorry, there are, there are two things. The um, we covered the housing goals and the housing goals, we decided what the goals were, but we still have to have a discussion about strategies and the rest of that document. So I'm not suggesting we do that now. I think that's a workshop, a work session. The, on the topic of STRs and ADU, the ADU regulation proposed by GHCC, uh, we did not uh come to make a conclusion or decisions on those. We had a, we had a general discussion about potential approaches. I think we're still in the space of um considering whether, how much we build upon what uh somebody tried to do, given that there's something at least could work in theory and then adjusted that, or if we started something ourselves from strategy. And then the question is, what's the actual mechanism to do? How much of this is um, is something try and do for us versus something the train book we can propose that could apply to the municipality, but that we practically apply to good. So you basically have, um, it was a couple of, a few years ago, there was um something about trash handling called uh the Secure Trash Regulation Zones, and it was written to me something could apply across the whole municipality, but it needed a trigger for it to apply in a particular area. So it's there in principle. They only actually started, started looking at that particular trigger. So that's a way that you can get something drawn, but still only actually applying. So uh for short-term rentals, you can say this is the general approach, um, but it's only actually implemented when you have a high enough rate of shorts. So it would be triggered if you were to trigger that. So that's one of the, was one of the approaches. So we discussed a number of different options. We just didn't make decisions on that to move. So again, we can do that now, or we can put this off to a work session or.
A gentleman.
Uh, me personally, I'd like to gather more information about this, like talking to our representatives and whatnot about the best route forward. Maybe I'd also like to have, but GHCC have a crack at this, so I, I'd like to adjust a bit and do the work session.
Yes, it's just a big topic. There are several, there are several different approaches.
Yeah, just GHCC will. Everybody just emphasised people here, some of the housing rules have taken a step back. I think a lot of the top five housing goals are somewhat aligned with the municipality that should happen. So we heard a little bit from that, and I think uh we said, the big one is number six, which was kind of voted on at the end, yeah, which was the increase curve. What I'd emphasise here is that, well, some people in the community may not realize that at least through the HLP five-year plan is that we've got parcels that are respectable. The hopeful arm will continue to be allocated to us for the, for the development of the town. And so the increasing government local control and management of public land kind of dovetails into that and the viability of that lens. In fact, that we've got parcel land, how to get things through that, so in concepts. Difficult with it. Um, the other thing I'm emphasising that I can say in the short-term regulation side of things is that I think even in, you know, even in the GHCC, we just. And I think we're, if we're going to do something, we're going to start very simple and very, propose something very simple. Um, and then if we want to build around it, then we can do that. Kind of, it kind of starts small. And then expand and that, and that a lot, a lot of that goes around, around the fee structure. So that was a lot, just.
Thank you. Any other comments from board this, or requests to put it on next, or chairs will request me to? Otherwise, I'll go to the next item. Uh, fifteen, GHCC recommendation for GBOS requests for municipal bed tax compensation, which, uh, one of you, Jennifer or Mike, has an update here.
Yeah, well, one of the updates is, uh, we did a presentation to the um Budget Advisory Commission uh a half ago. And uh, they came out with a uh resolution, and you can think of some of the things that were answered, many. And that's, uh, that's on the agenda for acceptance. So this is basically, this is in the packet. Uh, this is basically just asking for um the assembly to review. Deal with the issue, deal with the definition of promotion of tourism industry to allow potentially some of the, what will be the just uh, you know, direct to uh visit and approach. Um, and then uh consider specific allocation of, allocation, sorry, uh, the short-term rental rate tax uh to mitigate the impact of short-term rentals on local. And it is, uh, this does not say specifically good, receive excellent money, but it's a, it basically recommend you. Short-term rental revenue is used to mitigate the impact of short-term rentals. We want it done at local level. And then also, it also asks for. And then also, it also asks for collecting better data from, uh, short-term rental platforms. So, we know how much revenue is, how much tax revenue is generated in each zip. So, we can do something similar. I mean, we have done something similar. In our general principles, we can build on this and, uh, then propose things very specifically as well. This discussion is likely not to happen now. This is something it's likely to happen later in summer, uh, before the next budget cycle. So, the discussion can be about revenues, like it happens.
Thank you for your work on this. There's nothing else. I'll go to the next item. Uh, that would be sixteen, the Gerwood Housing Economic Committee recommendation for G B O S resolution of support to code change to put P under dwelling mixed use in two-zoned land east of Main Street. Change intent language as present.
So, the mechanics of this, after getting done, what the code proposed, change to code proposed, that's pretty simple. So, the change in code is pretty simple for us. How are we getting done is kind of got caught up in another bigger argument going on. Which actually Kyle referenced earlier about how, uh, the assembly can or cannot, um, initiate changes. In the past, what we've had most success doing is getting a change, um, sponsored by assembly. And then typically gets either active or more standard typical, sorry, is for it to go back. So, then come to the assembly again. That's kind of, that's kind of hit a little bit of a roadblock over this kind of unit of, over the Anchorage Bowl wide home initiative. And that's hit some, um, some issues about how code works, whether things can really be initiated by the assembly or not. Um, and if it can't, then it has to be started by the planning or a review body, and whether we're a review body or not, it's not exactly clear. So, it's sort of created this mess of, um, of questions and complexities. So, what I, what I recommend we do is, um, the role of the assembly is being dealt with. And, uh, nights coming forward tomorrow. So, depending on how that goes, it probably won't be decided tomorrow, but it'll be decided in the next few weeks. Depending how that goes, we can then follow the right procedure for us, the quickest procedure to handle when we want to. But we're just at this moment where everything is kind of in this huge churn and throwing this request in the middle is not going to do us any, any, any good.
Did, did we not make a motion last meeting about this?
We did.
And then it was kind of vague, but it was because we three, it was an ask we were like.
But very, this very specifically now is a terrible.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks.
Any other comments? Right. None. Thank you, Mike. Uh, number seventeen, discuss levies in Gerwood. California Creek Levy protecting town center. English Creek, California Creek turning in arm levy protecting old Gerwood. Kyle?
Uh, nothing at this point in time. Um, you know, I did assess it once the snow had melted out. We don't, we're not seeing, um, any really active damage at this point, but I think there's a coordination meeting going on to get together, uh, the different stakeholders in that area to discuss it, um, and also pursue, uh, a, um, a monitoring station being put in by USGS down at that bridge. So, I think those, those were our next two big steps to move forward there.
Go ahead.
So, when you guys went out and looked at it, um, did you, was like D O T or you, you walked in?
I just walked in. I didn't have anybody else with me.
Did you notice any, like, new erosion? I mean, this isn't imminent thing. It needs to be dealt with. Did you see any new?
Nothing new that stood out to me, but, um, but no, I hadn't noticed. I didn't go on the other side either. So, I only stayed to the, there was a roadside where we maintained over there.
That's where the stream is.
Yeah. They reinforced the other side a few years ago with railroad.
Any questions, comments?
Just pretty well. So, is it scheduled, is this coordination meeting between the D O T and railroad and us? And maybe H L B, is that scheduled for a particular time?
No, um, uh, I was waiting. Amanda was taking the lead on that because she's been talking with Aldo. So, I need to probably check up to Amanda and see where she is. It hasn't happened on my list.
Is coordination management or any other, uh, because we, we have just us, so. And H L B is the.
I mean, water management could probably have a role of permitting any, uh, work that will happen in the future. But from a landowner perspective, it would be the landowners should be involved with that.
And at this time, we don't know exactly who the landowner is, is that?
Well, the levy, so the levy sits on H L B parcel. Um, anything below medium high water is pretty much state land, um, so the high water line. Um, you have the railroad, uh, trestle and right away to the, to the north. And then down to the south, you have the D O T right away. So, you have several different landowners within just that stretch between the two bridges.
It sounds like they all agreed to that. I mean, they know, they all agreed to their little section of ownership.
Pretty well plotted, stated that they have those areas. You know, there's, I think there's a hundred foot right away. Maybe a two hundred foot right away for railroad and two hundred foot right away for D O T. Side, and the, and the levies connect right through it. You know, and the historical things that we found in the past is that most likely that levy was put in to access to the railroad bridge from the Seward Highway and also to channelize the water so it moves straight through there. And, um, and, and between those two bridge abutments, so, um, but that was all done quickly. Probably post nineteen sixty-four earthquake. And so, that was before FEMA and requirements for permitting and all those things. So, it's been difficult to find any real, uh, uh, history on it or in design records on it.
Uh, in interest of time?
I just want to ask about the, uh, the California Creek, um, I think as well. So, post office and creek side. Um, I, I noticed quite a bit. So, to me, that looks like something that's actively being eaten away.
Yeah, and that's on my work list as well. Um, so, that is all on, uh, Anchor School District land. So, discuss to see where that goes. They aren't, not too hopeful. There's going to be a lot of response from the school district about it. So, at that point, it'd be a discussion back to the service area if we want to get involved with that area. That's going to be the one, the two. We're going to fund any repairs in that area.
And is that something we, um, need to act on before next meeting or is that kind of timescale?
To act on funding it?
No, no, to act on discussing it, to act on making decisions or writing letters.
Uh, I don't know. I mean, I, I'll be honest with you. I got a lot on my plate right now and so I'm trying to work through these lists. And so, I'll, I'll try to get to it this week before I leave for the week.
Well, the, well, obviously, the old Gerwood has, would have a huge impact on old Gerwood if there's a problem. The other levy, one upriver, California Creek. The school area, to me, it's like it's more activity being destroyed.
Yeah, I, yep. No, I agree with you on the importance of it. So, I'll try to work on it. Thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion to extend the meeting for the final items?
A motion to extend the meeting. Fifteen. I'll second.
Second, any opposition? Okay, thank you. We have one more question online. Brett?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Just wanted to, um, uh, make Kyle, you know, aware and everyone. We are also kind of working behind the scenes on a more comprehensive sort of hydrogeology look at the valley. And, uh, that topic had been brought up with, uh, um, that dike, uh, below, uh, the railroad bridge. So, I know that that's on the radar for this. And as far as a kind of outlook for getting answers, um, I'm kind of guessing in the fall, we might have a better idea of what a, uh, better comprehensive plan might look like for, um, a lot of these issues that, and those, those were included in the discussion. So, just a heads up as to what's going on and sort of working behind the scenes towards the, um, sort of flood mitigation, uh, infill, exfil, um, uh, the dike did come up for flood control. Um, and then, uh, uh, California Creek was kind of mentioned, um, but I'm not sure how far into it. Uh, you know, that topic had gotten. So, anyway, more of that to follow. Um, we need to keep in touch on, I think, on that topic as this progresses.
Anything else on this item? Move to new business. Dan, come on down.
All right, thanks. Uh, Dan Starr. I'm from, uh, Bike Wood or the Mountain Bike, um, Trail Building Organization here in Gerwood. Uh, quick history, we started in twenty sixteen. Um, we were Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance then. Um, I've had a lot of confusion with Gerwood Alliance and then changed her name to Bike Wood a couple of years ago. Uh, but we built, um, a, a couple of mountain bike trails out within the five K Nordic area in twenty eighteen, in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, those three summers. We built three trails, uh, that were in green and yellow. The yellow one was extended in twenty twenty-one. Um, Small House Two Cents in Earnigan, uh, are the three trails that we built. Uh, we had plans at that time to continue building mountain bike trails out in the five K area, um, by Gerwood. Uh, we've, you know, been redoing the Gerwood Trails Master Plan in that time. So, we've sort of been on hold while the trails plan was finished. Now that it is, we're trying to get back to work and build some more mountain bike trails out there. So, uh, we're calling this one, uh, just phase two, and it's those two red trails. Um, if you're familiar with the area, they start from the top of the five K, um, kind of the highest point out there, uh, which is where our, our two cents trail already begins from. These other two trails will head over towards the expert loop, um, cross over them and come down to, uh, what's basically the low point in five K, which is kind of the bottom of Uncalled For Hill near the C P G cab road where those red lines end. Uh, and so those are kind of the longest continuous fall lines, uh, sort of a downhill, um, trail that we can find out there. So, we've got a couple of lines there flagged, um, that we'd like to get to next. Um, so these are class three trails, um, kind of two to three, but we, we call them class three. So, it's a four to six foot trend and twelve foot clearing width. Um, that clearing width is rarely used. Um, it's not like a twelve foot cut of the whole length of the trail. Um, they just call it twelve if you need it and it turn or somewhere, um, you have twelve to work with. But they're, they certainly feel a little bit smaller than that. Um, most of these trails here will be hand-built. We've done quite a bit of mini excavator machine building in the past, uh, the upper area here. You can't really get the excavator too. So, we're going to do some volunteer hand building and then the lower sections, we may have the mini excavator out there or continue handling them all the way to the bottom. Um, so that, that's the plan there. So far, we've gone through, uh, Gerwood Trails Committee. We had a unanimous vote and support, uh, there last month. And then this month, we're new business at Land Use in here. And just seeking to get, uh, a resolution of support next month that we can take on to, uh, the Anchor Assembly and then show, uh, H L B our support from Gerwood as well. So, kind of in simultaneous talks with H L B while we're doing the process here within Gerwood. I think that's, uh, all I really have.
Thank you, Dan, for being there in the late. Any comments or questions from the board?
Dan, is that the one we were working on getting funding on?
It is, yeah. So, this came up at Trails. Um, I don't remember exactly how far it we took in the fall. Um, we were seeking support to write a grant for the R T P grant. There was still a lot of unknowns around the Trails Plan and the timing, so I was hesitant to go through with the grant and commit to it. So, we ended up not doing that, that grant. So, we have, we have some funding now. When we get fully approved, we'll start hosting fundraisers and do a big, uh, cash drive, um, for these. But it's been a little difficult to do the fundraising when we're in limbo of the approval. It's hard to, it's hard to ask the people for money when we're not, you know, ready to build, so shovel ready. So, kind of wait to that point and then we'll strike up some more fundraising again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dan. We will see you again.
Awesome. Thanks.
Number, uh, nineteen, resignation from G H C C and replacement of that member. I have a few of something here.
Sure, I can mention what I know. I received an email from one of the members of G H C C. He just doesn't have the time at the moment to spend on that project. Um, that individual is the person who was kind of representing the, uh, renter composite. Um, so, um, I think the procedures would be that we post that the position is available and see whether we have somebody who puts their name in the hat.
Thank you. Uh, guy?
Will the job description have a kind of a, will you be looking for somebody to fill that role, uh, similar, a renter maybe? Or the job description mention that?
Given the volume of interest that we've had, I think we'll just look for somebody who is interested in participating in that. And then we'll let G B O S sort among the qualifications and determine what to do. I mean, that's not many.
I have thrown my hat in a few times for this. I know I'm, I can represent the resort on this. Uh, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to work together with the housing projects we're working on. So, still putting it out there if you don't get any other interest, but.
I think we have a, uh, residency issue that the board is working through.
Okay. Just putting it out there.
We had a discussion earlier today about how, how seats are set up. How G H C C was very restricted and had to be a registered voter, so you're a young citizen and registered voter.
Also, I'm a renter, so. I said, also, I'm a renter.
Well, I, Brian?
Well, I, well, and that's, uh, I really appreciate your willingness to get on, onto a committee like this. Previously, the management of L E S K has been very involved in the community. Staff that works, um, both at the mountain and the hotel have participated in any number of community committees. And, um, it might not be you that, that, that can do it because of residency. But, uh, there are a number of qualified people at L E S K Resort that could represent Pomeroy in the community on one of these, on one of these committees.
Yeah. I'll, I'll see if I can chat, but yeah, there, there probably is. I'm very close to the projects. I think it's just a good, good way to collaborate on those future, of course, housing developments, so.
Good. Suggestions and to chime in with the bulletin boards, there might be places to post that, uh, that vacant, resort property somewhere, plus the post office. But, anyway. I don't know if we need to formally say anything, Margaret, but I presume that that's what we'll do next because even though it's new business.
Oh, we'll be, yeah, the purpose of it being new business is the, that the next meeting, you can determine an individual.
Okay, anything else on this? Hey, reports? Reports are in the packet, fantastic packet. You're going to create a motion to adjourn? In a second, hi, adjourned.